So, good evening and welcome. I'm Natasha Spada, Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I'm calling the August 14th Planning Board Meeting to Order. This meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted in a hybrid manner, consistent with current state regulations, and is being recorded. As a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast to the town's YouTube channel, and also via Zoom, and by the Needham Channel, and is being recorded for publication, later viewing, and administrative purposes. I'll call the rule for the record. All materials for this meeting are available on the town's website, needhamma.gov. So, I'll call the rule for the record. When I call your name, please say you're present. Paul Alpert.
Present.
Adam Block.
Present.
Artie Crocker.
Present.
Justin McCollum.
Present.
And we have Lee Newman and Alex Clea are also here. So, today, the first item is the MBTA zoning initiative, and we're going to do an overview of the current Hone zoning proposal. We got comments from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. There's going to be a presentation of the staff recommended MBTA zoning bylaw revisions to address the comments. Then there's a presentation of zoning changes for 100 West Street, and then an overview of the Site Plan Approval Framework and Planning Board Permitting Authority by Chris Heep. So, that's the first item. The second one is to review and approve final MBTA community zoning language for transmittal to Select Board and initiation of public hearing process, which is happening at the beginning of September, I believe. And then, the Board of Appeals, there's a discussion and vote to approve Large House Study Group that we discussed last time. We have two meeting minutes, June 18th and July 11th, and then a report from the Planning Board and Board Directors and Correspondents. So, with that, I think we're starting with the MBTA zoning initiative, and that is the overview of the current zoning, the comments received from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities.
Sure. Chris and I, I guess we can both talk about this. So, just to start out, you know, you received a letter from the state, and we arranged to have a conversation with the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities last week, and Chris was at that meeting, I was at that meeting, Katie King was at that meeting, to kind of go through the letter to make sure we understand what's expected of us, and make sure we have a clear understanding of what's, I think, articulated in letter and what our responsibilities are. And so, I think, just briefly, I can tell you that I think we're in very good shape. So, the first item was just basically some discrepancies in terms of labeling, which can certainly be rectified. I think one concern we have, which is covered under the second item, which addresses the 110-foot setback that we had included as relates the building at 100 West Street. We wanted to make sure that the state was actually going to allow us to count the full 187 units on that property, and they basically said that they didn't see that setback standard that we had imposed as being an impediment, because it only really extends up to a portion of the existing parking lot, and you're able to calculate the full 187 units on that site. Chris, stop me if I say something where you want to add something. So, I think we're okay.
There's no change to that.
So, there's really, I think, no change required to that. Okay. The next one, I think, relates to the affordable housing provision we had established at 12.5%. I think the state's okay with that. When I uploaded the information, I don't know that they necessarily downloaded the file that we had submitted, which had our analysis in it, but staff did look at the analysis we submitted prior to our meeting, and indicated that they felt comfortable with the 12.5%, that it needed to be signed off by some folks. Which staff? It was Nathan, I can't think of his last name.
Chief.
Mr. Barbe.
The Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Their staff.
Oh, so, state staff.
State staff.
Our financial analysis.
Yes.
On affordability.
Yes.
And they resolved that it's...
They felt comfortable with the 12.5%.
Notwithstanding comment number three from the state.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
Then, Chris, I'll let you talk about the definition of family, since you're the expert in that field.
Which, by the way...
Which is, you know, we've received comments from the AG as a result of our ADU bylaw because of the same issue.
It's actually a distinct issue. So, there are now, I think, several issues in play with respect to the two different definitions of family in the zoning bylaw, but this comment from EOHLC is specifically addressed to, I think, a different issue than the one we heard from the Attorney General in response to the ADU question. And we raised this with EOHLC in our meeting with them late last week after we had received the letter. So, basically, EOHLC takes the position, backing up, our existing definition of family in the zoning bylaw caps the number of unrelated occupants who can exist as a single housekeeping unit to either three or five, depending upon whether the owner of the property lives in the unit, and allows for up to an additional two residents to live in a unit by special permit. So, there is effectively a cap on the number of unrelated individuals who can reside in a dwelling unit under our existing definition of family. EOHLC takes the position that MBTA zoning cannot include a cap on the number of occupants who reside within a particular dwelling.
Whether related or not.
Related or not. There can be no cap on the number of occupants residing in a dwelling unit in an MBTA zoning project, and the way they get there is that Chapter, Section 3A of Chapter 40A, which is the MBTA Communities Act, says that all housing developed under MBTA zoning needs to be suitable for families with children. That provision of the statute, they say, means that there can't be a number, a cap on the number of occupants. So, they instructed us in the letter to please ensure that residential dwelling units permitted in the district are not subject to this cap. So, included in your pack.
Did they explain how they jumped from being suitable for children to having an unlimited number of adults who can live together?
They did not explain that in any great detail. That is their position, and that is included in...
And they're the 5,000-pound gorilla.
Included, it's included in the published guidance for how we comply with the MBTA Communities Act.
Are you raising that because...
No, I'm just, I'm just marveling at the, I'm going to use the word irrationality of the thinking of the people at the EOHLC, okay? If they're going to insist that we not have a cap, then we won't have a cap.
Right.
Because they're making the rules.
Right.
You know, so, what are we going to do? But, you know, Chris said that they asked about how they got there, and they said that the statute says it has to be a situation where it's amenable for children.
Right.
Well, that's great. That's a wonderful provision, and let's enforce that provision, but let's not jump to, you know, children means any number of college students?
The definition of children would tend to be established, to be honest, like, are we just, could we then carve our, you know, our zoning bylaw to say, fine, it's not a cap on children?
No.
No, so, that's the thing. What are they trying to...
The published guidance from EOHLC says that EOHLC will deem a multifamily zoning district to comply with these requirements as long as the zoning does not require multifamily uses to include units with age restrictions, does not limit or restrict the size of the units, cap the number of bedrooms, the size of the bedrooms, or the number of occupants, or impose a minimum age of occupants.
What prevents it from being a, becoming a rooming house?
The...
But, under what provision? Like, to Paul's point, there, I understand that, you know, and this is, I guess, it's a matter of poor, potentially poor, public policy. I understand the intent, but I, you know, it would be interesting if we could find some level of enforcement to prevent, you know, uses that are otherwise not really intended, and that would effectively become a rooming house, or effectively, you know, student, you know, student housing, which can have different impacts than, you know, than something like a rooming house, or a typical apartment building. But, I don't know what the solution is. Have you given any thought to that? What prevents it from becoming a rooming house?
No, I don't have an answer to that question.
Can we look at this from another direction, which may or may not help solve this direction? That is, so, there's a house on Webster Street, you know, five houses in from the corner of Webster and Allen Ave. It's a, some version of a halfway house, or something like that. I forget exactly what type, but it's that type of a house. So, clearly, actually, I don't know how many are in the house, but I think somewhere, clearly, they are unrelated people, and so, and that's something which is, I'm sure the state is happy to have, and it's a needed thing in society. So, I don't know if this interpretation, what they're stating, has anything to do with but fear of, you know, zoning out that type of thing, has anything to do with that, but that, I mean, but that exists. That exists on Webster Street in Needham, and there's probably some other, there might very well be some other places in Needham would have that type of thing.
They're licensed to a certain...
Well, but, yeah, no, I still understand their license, I understand their licensing, but that's...
Yeah, and that's an exception to our bylaw.
Yeah.
That's allowable.
And halfway houses of the type that I think you're discussing, I don't know the specific property, but are also protected by state and federal law for reasons that are entirely unrelated to MBTA zoning.
So, there's no connection whatsoever as far as the allowance, just allowing...
It's unrelated. I guess, so, for present purposes, I think this is, you've all identified an issue that maybe we want to think about going forward, but for purposes of establishing compliance with the MBTA Communities Act, we have been told by EOHLC that we cannot include a cap on the number of occupants in these dwelling units, in these projects. So, that's, those are the instructions, and I think, you know, maybe solving for the problem may be an exercise for, you know, another day. And, to your initial point, Adam, I do think we need to address the definition of family in other respects for purposes of responding to the comments from the AG.
Agreed.
In response to the ADU bylaw. So, this is a, another, well, I guess I regard this as a separate zoning revision that we will tackle soon, but for purposes of establishing compliance with MBTA zoning, the easiest path is to include an exemption in Section 317 that eliminates the cap on occupants in an MBTA zoning project.
I'll just want to make just one more snide comment.
If I may. We always, we always have the alternative of keeping our language, because I think that it is, it lacks common sense, their interpretation of the statute, to say you can't have a cap on any number of people, nothing to do with children. So, we could pass the zoning as we want it, and have them come back and say we don't comply, and we say, fine, take us to court. And I, I've said this before with my snide comments, I'm always in favor of your getting legal fees to try cases for us, but I don't think the board, the Select Board wants to spend the money to go there, so, let another, let another town be the first.
I, you know, for my part, a lot of, a lot of work has gone into the development of the zoning in its current form, and we've got a very small set of comments back from EOHLC. I think it would be a shame to take all that work and still be out of compliance for failure to respond to one of the very small handful of comments we got back.
There's also, the building code has a certain amount of people that you can do per square footage for, for different types of uses, use groups. So, for like, assembly, you have a, so, you have it for residential as well, so that, I'll check and see, but that could be a way of limiting the amount of people that could be within a square, certain square footage.
Health Department, too.
And the Health Department.
So, we have other methods, you know, we can comply with this.
So, for the purposes of presentation, when you present as a town meeting, I think it's important that we proactively, you know, call out what those restrictions are to recognize that the public purpose, the public policy of this, you know, which is good and important, is maintained, yet not just neighborhood character, but through the health, and I'm not sure what building codes, but the Health Department.
The Massachusetts Building Code.
I'm not sure what provision, because what, because for a...
I'm finding it right now.
For, you know, to go from an apartment, to go from an apartment building to a rooming house, I don't know which, you know, which building code.
We'll find, we'll find, we'll find out.
But, my point is that there would be...
I didn't mean to interrupt down.
My, my point is that it will be productive and helpful for town meeting to identify what other municipal, at least, controls we have to mitigate this from becoming something unintended. So...
Can I just add one additional thought? And this is off the top of my head, so, don't hold me to it, but I expect that most projects developed under this zoning bylaw are going to be new construction, or, you know, developer rehabs of existing buildings, and all of the units within them are either going to be affordable, in which case, a family is going to need to qualify to rent the units or buy the units, or market rate, in which case, I would expect that the units are probably going for, you know, healthy rent or sales price. So, I don't know that any of the units developed under this bylaw, and therefore exempt from the cap on number of occupants, are going to be, you know, obvious candidates for, you know, a college rental apartment with 15 students living in it, so.
The Chapter 10 means, because it's 200 square feet per gross square feet per person, so, basically, if you have 1,000 square feet, you can only have five people.
And though, Chris, I agree with you, that's...
That's helpful.
Highly likely that's what's going to happen, but still, as Adam says, we need to prove out why we don't have to worry about that.
There was an article in the Hall of last week about college students who are living off campus in order to afford their rent. They're getting like, six or eight college students together to rent an apartment. Now, in this particular case, they were interviewing a particular group of students. There were six students, and they, and it said that they were living in a six-bedroom apartment. Where you find a six-bedroom apartment, I don't know, but, you know, a large group of college students getting together to rent a place in order to, you know, and...
The flight attendants.
You know, and enforcing the board of health provision, you know, so, somebody has to drop a dime. A group of college students squeezing into an apartment, you know, it's, it's, it's an interesting situation.
So, I hear that we're kind of coalescing around, agreeing with this, obviously.
Well, we're going to do what they want to do.
We should agree with it, and then, let's figure out how we're going to deal with it.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the thinking.
Right.
You know, I just want to make one other point about how I don't understand the thinking of the people at the EOHLC, which is, we can't limit the size of a bedroom. And in all my years of practicing law and looking at zoning bylaws, I have never seen a bylaw that limits the size of a bedroom. Have you?
No, that's inherent to, I think, also. Zoning is not supposed to regulate the interior space of construction.
But, the building code, you can't have a smaller space than seven feet by seven feet, so, you have to have at least 50 square feet, which is very small, but I don't know if there are other, any other provisions. I mean, I can find out, but...
There are. There's like, I think, I can't remember what the state is, but they have other, like, there's a closet, if there's a window, the windows of a certain height.
Right, right. But, I'm talking about square footage, because that's what we're talking about, right?
Right, but in terms of determining whether or not some, the space qualifies under those other provisions to be counted.
We're talking about, we're talking about the rules for having a zoning bylaw, and they're saying your zoning bylaw cannot limit the size of a bedroom. And my immediate reaction is, why are you concerned about that? I've never seen a bylaw that limits the size of a bedroom. Where did you...
The building code does, and then...
Well, yeah, but they're not, we're not dealing with the building code. They're not talking to us about the building code. They're talking to us about a zoning law, a zoning bylaw.
So, that was number four?
So, that was number four, yeah.
I digress.
What's number five?
Okay, so, let's, yeah, let's go to number five.
Oh, number five, it was that, in the model that we ran, we inserted a dwelling unit per acre limit for this district that wasn't reflected in the zoning. The model shouldn't have had that limit in it, so we can make that change, and then the two, the model and the zoning will be internally consistent. I think the next one just deals with some fields that we're missing in the GIS, shape fields, which we can have RKG take care for us, so that's easily addressed. And then, they, maybe Chris wants to speak about this, they asked that the board, or the town council, take a look at site plan approval processes that we had, just to make sure we weren't overstepping our boundaries, but they didn't identify any problems.
This comment was, you know, yeah, this, this asked us to take another look at the site plan review criteria, and, but did not identify anything specific that they had found to be wrong with, or inconsistent with state law in the site plan review criteria, and we confirmed with them in our, in our meeting that this seventh comment is effectively boilerplate, and nonetheless, did in fact go back and take a look at it, and I'm comfortable that the site plan review criteria are just fine.
And we're going to go through it in a little bit, right?
Yeah.
To make sure that we understand what is in our purview. Okay. So, those are the overview of the comments, and now, we're going to, there were recommendations to the zoning bylaw revisions, so, should we go through those, what those changes were?
I can...
Chris was going to take you through those.
I can walk everybody through them.
Do we want to put them up, or is that too...
Do you? Sure. I think so.
This is, would be what was in the packet, I imagine. Yeah, it's what's in the packet on page...
Six.
Starting on page five. Yeah. I don't know if others were able to review it, but I reviewed it, and I didn't see anything that kind of stuck out, just, just to make sure, because these are changes that we're making, and we just, that everybody feels comfortable.
Sure, I can, I can go through it, change by change, if that's, if that's helpful.
Sure.
And so, yeah, the changes that we're going to walk through are responsive to what we heard from EOHLC in the letter, and in addition to some comments, feedback we had gotten from the Attorney General's Office, Lee had shared, in addition to sharing this with EOHLC, we had shared the draft bylaw with the Attorney General's Municipal Law Unit as well, because they also offered to provide some review, and Margaret Hurley, who's the Assistant Attorney General, who runs the municipal law unit, was nice enough to give us some, some feedback. So, the changes here are sort of a mix of responses to EOHLC and addressing some of the helpful feedback we had gotten from the AG. And this first change falls into the latter category. It was pointed out that we were defining, we were adding a definition to Section 1.3 of the zoning bylaw for multifamily housing, and we already have in that section a definition for multifamily dwelling. So, the comment was, we should just think about reconciling those two definitions and making them consistent. So, the approach that we came up with to respond to that comment is to take our new definition of multifamily housing out of Section 1.3 and put it instead in new Section 317. The reason for that is that the existing zoning bylaws do not use the term multifamily housing, and instead use multifamily dwelling. So, by pulling that, that new defined term out, putting it in Section 317, we're ensuring that everything is internally consistent, and we're only really using multifamily housing in Section 317 itself, so it's going to be a self-contained definition that really only applies to MBTA zoning projects.
That's interesting. So, that shows that somebody was actually reading our bylaws beyond what we were presenting.
They very clearly had cross-referenced the, the new proposal with the entirety...
So, was that the Attorney General's Office, or was that the EOHLC?
That comment came from the Attorney General's Office.
Interesting.
So, that's the change on page one, and also the page on, change on page two, because we're just moving the definition out of 1.3 into 317.
Put a patch on there.
Great. No, it was very helpful on their part. Next change is on page six. New Section 317.5.5. This change is the one that was made in response to the cap on occupants comment that we just discussed, and you'll see here that this change goes a little bit beyond the specific comment that we got from EOHLC, and lists sort of a number of other things that the zoning won't do, which is to say, limit the number of bedrooms, limit the size of bedrooms, limit the age of the occupants, or cap the number of residents. The reason I sort of, we went a little bit beyond the specific comment from EOHLC is if you turn to EOHLC's published guidance on this, all of these prohibitions about what the zoning can't do exist in the same section and in the same paragraph. So, I, to the extent we're catering to that one comment, I thought it best to just lay out all of the things that we're not doing in one section.
I have a suggestion. Why don't we replace, multifamily housing projects shall not be required to include units with age restrictions, which, which says it's not required, but you can, right? And the whole point of it is to prohibit age restrictions. Instead, to say multifamily projects shall not permit age restrictions, and units shall not be limited to, et cetera, et cetera. Am I misunderstanding something?
The language as drafted says that we, the town of Needham, can't require age restrictions. I suppose that if an applicant wanted to propose an age-restricted development and was doing it on a purely voluntary basis, I don't think that would be prohibited or get us in trouble under MBTA zoning.
I thought that MBTA zoning required, you know, that you can't restrict age.
We cannot restrict age.
We cannot restrict age.
But, the developer can.
Okay, so, that, so, I recognize the distinction. One is a function of the zoning, the other's a function of market condition. So, the market condition can allow, the zoning says, so, that's, so, a developer could do senior housing and still qualify under MBTA.
Right. We just can't limit what they can do.
Correct.
They can propose something, we just can't limit it.
So, this new section is basically enumerating what we aren't doing in the zoning.
Well, that's, that's an interesting question. The, if the law requires that, that the, that the MBTA projects, the MBTA zone cannot have projects that are not conducive for families with children, can a developer put in a senior living facility in an MBTA zone? Or would they be in violation of the statute?
I can look into that, I confess.
Interesting question.
I haven't thought about that before now.
I mean, that's, that's beyond this, although...
They might not have thought about that.
Right.
Although, you know, it might be, it might be something that would be raised when they come to us on site plan review. They're building a senior living unit in the MBTA zone.
And the parking, the parking requirements may be different. So, then, does that mean that they're subject to the ordinary parking requirements, or the new, a new parking standard that doesn't exist because we're not requiring restrictions?
But, we still have a parking requirement here, half a space.
Right.
But, I can't, I don't, I don't have the Institute of Traffic Engineers manual, the latest version.
Right.
Which may or may not make a distinction of the use for senior housing and the different types that have a different...
For the traffic study.
Exactly.
But, that number's going to be lower than what we're requiring in this overlay district now.
Which means that we're, which means that our zoning requirement is, could require, therefore, more parking that's necessary, but, under the newest, under the new site plan process, can they come to us with a waiver to waive if they, if they're doing senior housing and they only need 26 spaces, but our zoning effectively says you need 35? Do they need to now go for a special permit, which is defeated, which defeats the purpose of the zoning to begin with, in order to get relief for the, for less parking?
If you want me to look into the question of whether or not an applicant could voluntarily propose an age-restricted project within the MBTA zoning district, I can do that.
Yeah, though, I would like that.
I can't answer a question as to how...
Until you have a project, you can't really answer, but I think answering...
And, and certainly, this zoning should not be drafted. It would be, it would be a wasted effort to draft this zoning now to accommodate an age-restricted project, because we can't require that here.
Right. But, that's a question that we should ask, I mean, that we should understand.
Well, I, I don't think it's something that needs to be done now. We need to pass a zoning bylaw that... We need to pass a zoning bylaw that complies with the guidelines, with the statute and the guidelines. That's our job right now. And if and when we have that in front of us on a site plan review in the district, then we're gonna have to go back to Chris.
Well, I think, I think it's good to know is if we know, then perhaps some developers will know because we know, because we've looked into the information. Maybe they'll, maybe they'll check it out anyway, but it's better to, it's better to know than not know before, before even any project is even here.
But if this is not, this is not prohibing, we're not requiring it.
Right, correct.
But a developer want, may. Developer may want to then restrict more than our zoning allows, which is compliant with the M B T A Communities Act. Are we then, what, are we then going to allow it? Because are, are, you know, are we?
By this, we could.
We could, right, exactly. We, we could allow it. Right.
The market plays kind of back.
But this is the whole spirit versus the, the, you know, what this intention versus what the reality is. And we should probably be aware of that. I understand Paul, what Paul's saying is that we, we need to move forward and make the warrant for, you know, going forward and doing this. But these are the knockoff implications that are going to be happening later on.
And, and there are multiple possibilities of things that could come up. So I think it's good that we're discussing it and that Alex and Lee are hearing this. Because the usual procedure that developers follow, not that they're required to, is that when they have a development, the first thing they do is they either informally. Discuss it with our staff or they file something with the staff and the staff would look at. Hopefully they will remember this meeting and say, you know, you're coming in with an age restricted development. And we're not sure you can do that. We need to go to town council.
Therefore, what I'd like to do, if the board agrees, is, and it kind of goes to Artie's point. I'd like, Chris, I'd like you to, to speak to the state. And, and resolve that although we're not requiring age restriction. A, that it's compliant for a developer on their own to choose to do that. And, and I, what governs, what's the authority for determining the parking standard? And have the state tell us. And I think that's important, again, for, you know, just so, I'm not recommending we change this definition. But I'm recommending we have the information. So at least we know and we can deal with it if we need to in town.
And we can talk more about it when you do the overview of the site plan approval framework, if there are any other questions for that, right? But I think right now we just, we're trying to make sure that we approve the recommended zoning. And then we're going to talk about West Street so that we can have a motion, you know, to accept the recommendations to move forward with that, right? And then, and then we're going to discuss this overview of site plan approval framework, which a couple of other items might come up from it, right? Okay, so let's keep on going with this and then. So the next one is.
Since we're on it, I'm looking at the very first sentence of Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 3A. That says, "An M B T A community shall have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right, provided that such multifamily housing shall be without age restrictions and shall be suitable for families with children." Now, we've already had the discussion about whether they're reading the statute the way I, as a lawyer, read the statute. But the way I read that statute, they cannot have an age restricted multifamily housing.
In one zone.
In, 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 in the M B T A zone.
And then the question is, is it principled on the underlying zoning? Because so much of this ties into the underlying districts.
Yeah, I mean, the zoning, what we zone in our, what we zone in our bylaws is we have to find out if, if it was the complete opposite of then if the developer comes in with something different. I mean, that's where we have to find out.
Remember, the applicant will always have the choice of developing property under this zoning or the underlying zoning. Or the other, or the other overlay if there's more than one overlay in play.
But getting clarity on that would be really helpful for all of us, because the first one that comes in, you know, will be the guinea pig, but.
I think the answer to, I think the answer was identified by Paul, which is, and I'm sorry, we went down this road. But the multifamily housing is the use that we're allowing in this district. And multifamily housing does not include an age restriction. So if someone wants to develop multifamily housing, it is unrestricted to this stage, even if they want to do so voluntarily. I can shore that up a little bit, but that's.
I just want to get clarity on the mechanics of this. So Paul's, so like we thought earlier, thanks Paul for pulling that out. Because based on what Paul read, that should say, the multifamily projects shall not, you know, are not, shall not include age restrictions or shall prohibit age restrictions. Because that keeps it compliant with what Paul just read. That's number one. And number two, mechanically, if that's the case, if someone wants to, like, for instance, we're dealing with, Lee, I think, like, the business district. Or the Avery Square Overlay District or the Avery Square District, the Business District. We're dealing with other districts in town. So Chris, you're saying, we, mechanically, they can choose to maybe do a multifamily project under a different district, but be governed by different dimensional regulations and uses. And therefore this is not applicable yet.
So we have a definition of multifamily housing, which is going to be in this bylaw that deals with the M B T A districts. So it's, so I would suggest that in the definition of multifamily housing, we include language. We say, "Multifamily housing, a building with three or more residential dwelling units or two or more buildings in the same lot with more than one residential dwelling unit in each building. And that complies with the requirements of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, and the rules and regulations thereunder."
So that it's going back to it and referring right back to it without having to have the same language.
Right.
But then, should we then modify this as well?
For the use?
No. Shall not be required to include units with age restrictions, like it's.
I take your point, but I think Paul's change is sufficient to address the concern.
Okay.
But are you still going back and asking the question if a developer comes in and wants to put in their development with an age restriction?
No, I think the, Paul, Paul's answered the question, I believe, through, by resort to the statute itself. And by making reference to the statute in our definition, we are addressing this conclusively.
So if a developer wants to put in a multifamily property, like an apartment building, let's say above where we're two cheese used to be. And they're choosing to do it under the M B T A guidelines.
I mean, that was the whole question.
Then they can't have an age restricted. If they choose to do it with an age restricted and such age restriction is permissible under the underlying district and the, and the rules of that district, then they're not, this is not applicable and they go under the other. So I have clarity now.
Cause I was a little short. Paul, could you just, somebody just tell me what, tell me what the new definition is?
Chris, what'd you write about that?
Would you write it down?
A building with three or more residential dwelling units or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential dwelling unit in each building. And that complies with the requirements of M G L, Chapter 40A, Section 3A and the.
Regulations and rules there.
Regulations and rules there under.
They may need to, a developer, a developer may be looking at this zoning bylaw because he can build a bigger building or have more units or something than the underlying district allows him to have. And so he has to, he has to decide which he wants.
Right.
You know, the, the bigger building or, or, you know, with the setbacks and the other requirements that we have here that may be more liberal than the underlying. Or having the age restriction and having to cut back his project.
Right. Okay. Yeah, so I think we're, we're on to 317 9.1, the site plan review.
Yes, on page nine. This was, the changes to this paragraph were just, were in response to a comment we got from the Attorney General, I believe. And it was just, the comment was simply that maybe we wanted to make extra clear that site plan review is being conducted under section 317 only and not under section 7.4 of the existing zoning bylaw. I think that did appear elsewhere, but there is certainly no harm in making that express in this section as well. So that's what this, this change does.
I didn't appreciate until now, to my earlier comment about the distinction of parking standards. We actually, under our own site plan process for the M B T A compliance, we actually can waive parking standards like you otherwise would in a special permit.
It's a limited waiver. We can only waive it to a certain extent, as I recall. The waiver says we can only waive it up to something.
When performing site plan review under section 317, the planning board may waive the requirements of subsection 317.6, which is.
I believe that's parking.
Parking.
Yeah, I did cross-check that.
317.6 is off-street parking.
Off-street.
And for subsection 513, which is the parking plan design requirements.
So we can waive that.
So we otherwise, good. I, I didn't, I didn't appreciate the fact that we have such full waiver. Cause that's normally a specific requirement under special permit. So that's great.
So should we be, or maybe you already did this, Chris. Should we be cross-checking what, what we review and require in Chapter 7? Site plan review with what's in 3.17 and make sure that there's nothing in section 7 that we forgot to put in here that we wanted here?
Yes, you should do that. I believe we did that in order to get to this.
We asked for that to be done, we're, home to ask for that to be done to make sure.
By who?
By Chris.
By, by Chris, okay.
I can say a combination of myself and Emily, who drafted a decent amount of the zoning.
Okay.
And I'm sure Lee and Alex as well. So you have, I mean, you, but you do have under section 317 92, the list of submission requirements that will be required as part of this type of application. I mean, so we've looked at that as a, at a staff level, but.
No, but we looked at it at home also. And I remember we changed some things, including landscaping, including trees to be retained and removed. And we also did the projected traffic volumes in relation to existing and reasonably anticipated conditions based on standards from the Institute of Transportation Engineers and prepared a licensed traffic engineer rather than someone out there counting cars.
Good, okay, good. So it's been done.
Well.
That's an answer, I love it.
So that was something that we were really concerned about, what is it that we're reviewing? And I think this kind of gives A through O, which is what Chris is going to talk about after we go through this.
All right. Next change is to, on page 10, I believe. And these are two numbered changes that will appear in the warrant article. And these are changes to section 7.7 of the existing zoning bylaw, which is the design review section. In, again, we had the question, the helpful question, comment from the Attorney General. Should M B T A zoning projects, well, did we intend that M B T A zoning projects would be subject to design review? And I think we, we very much did. But that didn't necessarily appear perfectly clearly in the original draft. So these two changes make clear in section 7.7 that M B T A zoning projects are subject to design review. Now, in that section of the zoning bylaw, there are various tiers of design review that get conducted. Sometimes it's a one report, sometimes it's two, sometimes it takes 35 days, sometimes it takes up to 70 something, I think. But this makes clear that it is the effectively quicker tier. And the D R B is expected to turn or advisory report around within 35 days of receipt of the application. Which is important because the site plan review applications will be subject to a time constraint. So it'll be important for D R B to get their comments back to the planning board relatively quickly. So that's new to this draft and made in response to the comments we got back.
Any questions on this or?
Are they aware of that?
They will be.
They're gonna need to hire people.
They will be on October 20.
Okay, so then page 19 of the.
In, so what follows now is the map, first of the two map change warrant articles. And there is the change in both, actually, to change, we were, we have referred to this as the M B T A overlay district. And we just changed all those references to multifamily overlay district for consistency. Next up is page 19.
And now we're into the neighborhood.
Now we are in the neighborhood plan. First change is to slightly revise the existing definition of mixed-use building that exists in section 1.3. This is necessary because the existing definition of mixed-use building speaks to the zoning districts where you can have a mixed-use building. Needham Center, Chestnut Street, Garden Street are the districts where you can do that. So you can do mixed use in the M B T A overlay district. So we needed to add that reference into the existing definition.
Next one is page 20.
I had a question on page 20.
Go ahead.
While I'm fine with B, it's, we talk about personal fitness, it's very specific use. Personal fitness service establishment. Then it says, "Parking is provided on-site for all land uses." Is this a more broader read of all land uses? Or is this just the use of personal fitness is required to not have any waivers?
No, this would mean that all of the various uses in the mixed-use project, added up and taken together, satisfy the required parking count.
Without any waivers.
Without any waivers.
So if you do a mixed-use project in those districts, you cannot come for a waiver, a parking waiver?
No.
And it's not just for the personal fitness use, it's for all uses enumerated here under permitted uses. Which just happens to be tucked under personal fitness.
Backing up a step, the changes included in 317 41 and 317 42, which are the special permit uses that can go into mixed-use district. The, the treatment of personal fitness service establishment in those two sections was intended to copy exactly the treatment of that use in the existing use table of the zoning bylaw. In other words, if you look at personal fitness service establishment now in all other zoning districts, you can have one by right that complies with parking. You can have one by special permit that does not comply with parking. So that, this is sort of a funky, for lack of a better word, treatment of parking for personal fitness service establishments. But it's duplicating exactly how it appears in the underlying zoning.
So for clarity, when it says on-site for all land uses, we're not referring to the uses permitted either by right or by special permit. It's only referring to personal fitness establishments, is that correct?
No, I don't, Lee, correct me if I'm misspeaking. But I think because we're talking about in these two sections, mixed-use projects. If, if the, if the mixed-use combination of uses does not satisfy the required parking count, the personal fitness service establishment component goes to a special permit use rather than a by-right use.
Oh, it's, that's an interesting question, because actually I don't know that that's necessarily true. Because the use is basically being called out in the zoning and you don't, and it's not linked to a mixed-use project. So it's kind of like the use itself. But if it sat in a mixed-use, if the use sat in a singular building.
But if it sat in a mixed use, if the use sat in a singular building, it would be one issue. If sat in a mixed use building, then it would be the total building.
Let me
So I guess I guess it is the total building.
Let me, I let me approach this a different way. Concern that I concern that I have is if you have a mixed use building, as just given the nature of Needham's geography, and you're going to have residential units presumably above, and you're going to have some kind of commercial use or a mix of commercial uses on the first floor. There is a high likelihood that a parking waiver would be required. And I'm fine with it being required as a function of a special permit. But I don't want to make the, I don't want to make the use effectively prohibited. In other words, you can only, you can only have a personal fitness establishment if you don't come to us for any parking waivers, which we've seen, for instance, on the one that opened only for a short period of time on Highland Avenue near Great Plain. They needed a waiver.
This, as I read this combination of changes to this section, it was intended to be permissive for personal fitness service establishments that may run a little short on parking. It's permissive in the sense that you just need a special permit in order to do it. Rather than prohibitory, which means you just can't have the use at all.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Thanks for clarifying that.
That is no, page twenty to twenty one. Sorry, three seventeen four one. There was one change that we made that we sort of skipped past to get to the personal fitness service establishments, which is Yes. To subsection B under three seventeen four one. And this new language just makes clear that a mixed use building in the MBTA overlay district must have commercial on the first floor and first floor only, and must have multifamily housing on all upper floors and only multifamily housing on all upper floors. I think that is not necessarily true for mixed use buildings in other zoning districts. So we had to make that clear here. And that is the end of the changes that have been made to the original draft in response to the comments received.
So should we have a motion to accept the recommendations of the staff now or wait until we talk to Tim Sullivan about a hundred West? Yeah, let's finalize this part. And then we'll do them.
Raise a question because I'm confused about this. Does our definition of mixed use building? I'm trying to work this in with Highway Commercial One, and I can't, and I'm trying to find the use regulations of the for highway commercial one. Our definition is talking about retail facing the street.
It's really Chestnut Street. That's not the highway commercial. I mean, that that's kind of coming out of the Chestnut Street overlay district.
Right. So because I remember when we did the project for Muzzy, there's going to be buildings with retail on the ground floor, but they're not going to be on the street necessarily. They're going to be kind of inside inside the project. You know, they're going to be like driveways or roadways within the project and and the red, unless those are considered facing the street. I mean, it's it's like here, if if
Street level or
If the one hundred West Street development, if he wanted to put in like a U shaped building with a courtyard in the middle.
Right.
Yeah, and have retail not not being on Highland Avenue, but being within the complex in the courtyard. Does that does the definition of mixed use building prohibit that because the retail is not on the street? And do we want to, we want to deal with with that?
Commercial uses in a mixed use building in This overlay district must be on the ground floor.
It's ground floor.
That is the only
Doesn't say that it has to be on the street.
Even though our definition of mixed use building that we're now amending in one point, one point three references facing the street. A mixed use building is a building in Needham Center, Chestnut Street, Garden Street, or multifamily overlay district in which the ground floor facing the street is used for such retail or restaurant uses as may be permitted by right or by special permit in the applicable district. And other ground floor and upper space and upper floor space is used for other commercial uses or dwelling units and subject to any additional qualifications provided. I'm just wondering if we want to take out
No, not not definitely. You have, I don't think you should sit over that definition. Because that that definition was actually created for
For other districts.
For other districts that we don't want to change.
Yeah, but even those, even in those other districts.
I wouldn't play with that. I mean, it was basically
Do we have a problem with their creating a building where the retail use is not on the street, but it's in a courtyard or it's on or it's within, or it's or it's at the parking lot?
Yeah.
That's a good point.
And if you look at the build, if you look at, you know, where, you know, we always say where Bertucci's is.
That's not one of the districts here.
Right, it's not on a street.
And but neither was, I don't think, based on the definition you read, neither's highway commercial one. So what are the districts again that we're talking about in the
Well, actually, we're talking about Bertucci's being within the multifamily overlay district.
Right. And so to my, to that point, like, for instance, where the liquor store is now, that's not on Highland Avenue and where Pure Sports is now. And then, you know, in twenty years, if that gets redeveloped, it's likely that, you know, that you would have retail that may be set back in order to accommodate other parking structures.
So if you wanted to put housing in 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 the business district, right, right now, the only area that is within our business district is the Bertucci's. The Bertucci's Plaza. So right now, if you wanted to have housing in that plaza, you could only do it under the multifamily overlay district, which is going to be there. And so you can't do it under the underlying district. And you can't have Bertucci's on the ground floor of that residential building because it's not facing the street.
How about we say a mixed use in in section three seventeen four two? A mixed use building containing commercial uses listed below on the ground floor, whether facing the street or otherwise, and provided that all upper floors shall be used as multifamily housing. Period. We say in the revised definition of mixed use in one point three that it's a defined term, but subject to such additional qualifications as may be included in the applicable overlay district. So we
Yeah, good.
Actually, you don't change, so you're not really changing it in the other areas.
Right, you're doing
Yeah. That was a really important catch.
Right, thank you very much. You guys are gonna miss me when I'm gone.
I miss you already.
We were gonna lobby that you don't
I missed, you're sitting there saying, how could I miss you if you won't go away?
Okay, so we're gonna miss Paul, but the motion, right? By Adam, and it's seconded by Justin to accept the recommendations.
Whatever Paul just did that.
What, the changes, the changes that we made this year.
Okay, so any questions, discussion, if they're all in favor, I can just do the entire group because we're not on. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays. Okay, so the motion was approved to accept the recommendations of the staff. And then the next one is we're having Tim Sullivan come talk to us about a hundred West, and then we'll review those recommendations. Okay, thank you, Chris, and then you're coming back in a couple of minutes. Okay. So so I see Tim Sullivan here. There were a couple of things that we discussed. He sent an email, which I'm sure he's going to discuss in a second on July thirty first, I believe. I'm pulling it up right now. With some of the questions that we had incorporated. So there are five items. So Tim, would you like to, you're on mute. Would you go through those five items and
Sure, happy to. Thank you for having me. So, yes, so after the last meeting, we had, there were a number of things we talked about. And so my homework was to get a draft in that addressed those those points. So there were, as as you mentioned, five points. So I submitted a revised draft of the zoning I had previously submitted. So the first change that we incorporated was to clarify that, you know, we had talked about allowing for some flexibility on the maximum front setback. So what we did is we clarified that seventy percent of the main datum line of the front facade will maintain that fifteen feet. And if it's more than that, then it needs a special permit. And that was
We had recommended as a number at the last meeting, right? So
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Let's go one by one. So does anyone have any questions on that particular one? Okay. Okay, so moving on to the second one.
Okay, the second one was also a recommendation to incorporate, to require a special permit if there is a new curb cut on either Highland or West being proposed. So that was the addition there. Not a modification of what's there, but a new curb cut. And so that special permit requirement was added.
Is everyone okay with that? We felt that there were, if there were any changes, we really needed to review it. Okay. Okay. And then the third one?
The third one was, again, a request that for appurtenances that overrun the height, that a fifteen foot app be put on that consistent with other districts, and I I added that as well.
Okay, any questions on that? We recommended that. Okay. The fourth one?
The fourth one, so this is, there's a, you can ask for a special permit for a fourth floor if it's peaked, stepped back, or has other, another architectural element incorporated. In the prior draft, that only referred to Highland, so we clarified that that also applies to West.
And that was also a recommendation that we made, so seems like that seems fine with everyone. And then, go ahead. Adam, did you have a question?
I'm just gonna make a comment, generally speaking, that like this is, I, this is the one site across town that's I think evidently ready for change. Yet the consultants from Hone had identified that it has a zero likelihood of turning and we're imposing significant restrictions, which is defeat us to the underlying principle of the MBTA Act. And I fear is can be problematic to the market. I mean, Tim's not making that latter point, but who knows when it comes time to actually you know, what the cost of a door is and these, and so many of these impediments to actually build the thing and to build it by right, which is the point of the of the thing. So I
But I think we also have to follow the fabric of of the town, I mean, the fabric of that area.
And that's the whole point, isn't it? Like, the whole reason why the state, the state said, following the fabric of the area.
Right.
Effectively prohibited multifamily development. So it's precisely that point to loosen the restrictions to enable the marketplace to create
And Adam, we have, we increased it from one to one point three at the last meeting and went to one point seven based on the information that he gave us. So this was just clarifying the last couple of items that that they were concerned.
I I recognize that.
So we've already made a bunch of changes.
I wasn't present at the previous, the previous meeting, and I'm just noting that notwithstanding the increase in FAR and so forth, the existing requirements that Hone had recommended, and and these are, I, you know, just push this, you know, any development more likely into a special pro, a special permit scenario, which defeats the underlying purpose of the MBTA zoning. That's
A special permit is the fourth floor, and if you have curb cuts, otherwise we have no say on any curb cuts in traffic.
I do, well, that's not entirely
Well, we'll get any other state mandate. We haven't been able to do anything with them, so.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I appreciate that you're being concerned with what happens here. I am, I think, as Natasha's pointed out, I mean, we're talking the fourth floor and curb cuts. So and 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 this is something you've talked to Tim about, and he seems to be, I think, okay with it. So I I guess I'm not certain how we're putting all kinds of restrictions on this down on the ground.
And Adam, I I appreciate what you're saying, but at the last meeting, we increased the FAR to one point three and one point seven, which was huge. Because that was something that was requested, and we agreed that we really needed to get that done.
I recognize.
And there were some other things that they asked, including can we cap, all these things are based on questions they asked. And we said, sure, you can do the height overrun. That was a change to make it better. But can you make it a fifteen feet? Because that's really typically what it is, right? Can you, they wanted to have a datum line to go back to fifteen feet, and we said, we want the seventy percent of the main datum line, and they thought that was reasonable. So this is, and these are some of the recommendations that they said would make it better, and we agreed on them. And they went back to review them one last time and came back with questions. So, but I appreciate what you're saying.
And I understand the reality a little differently, but nevertheless, to your point, you know, generally speaking, we're imposing, my general comment is, we're imposing significant restrictions on the marketplace in the one place that would otherwise be, you know, easier and perhaps more ripe for turnover. So I just, I let each one of those go. I just wanted to make that general comment, and we'll continue.
These were recommendations that they made, and we and 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 we approved most of them. So just to let you know that these were not, we didn't come back with some of these, these were recommendations that they made that we improved.
I mean, I mean, the one thing that we haven't talked about, I'm not sure when we're eventually going to get to an actual change coming up, and that is if we're if we're allowing one point seven, we have to be, have to have certainty what's going to be in the building.
Well, one point seven is is a special permit.
I understand it. Well, yeah, but we have to, yeah, but but we still say special permit, but I still say that it has to have some, something in there about is it, it's going to be independent living and affordable housing versus, oh, special permit. They can do
We just had a discussion, and if it's multifamily overlay district, we can, we can't limit it to
Hold on, hold on, but this, but this is, okay, but isn't allowing the fourth floor and now a whole other project? Isn't that changing everything under that? Or does that fourth floor still have to abide by the the MBTA community guidelines?
I think it's either gonna, if they choose to go under the S, the Avery Square overlay district, they're going to have to conform to those rules, which do require and or and or, so it's independent living for seniors and or assisted living and or memory care. However, if they choose, if a developer on this site chooses to go under the multifamily MBTA zoning, which that someone may suggest is more permissive, then no, they're not, they're not required to have the age restriction. They're not, then they're all, and they're required to have the affordability requirement of twelve and a half percent. They can choose to do more, but the minimum requirement is twelve and a half percent.
Okay, let me just, okay, lots of different districts here, lots of different conversations going on as far as, okay. Okay, so we know what was approved at town meeting several years ago, which came back to bite us in my, bite us in my opinion. The and or clause type thing. I do not want to get into a scenario where the fourth floor can be on this building with a one point seven FAR, where then they can come back and say, well, there's an and or, we can do assisted living and memory care.
No, can I, may I chime in?
I want to insert.
Can we let Tim?
Madam, so just to be very clear, everything we're talking about in these changes relates to multifamily housing, not senior living, none of that. This is all multifamily housing. Other, one point three is as of right, and one point seven would be by special permit. Period.
Right. We already had a discussion earlier that if they're building the building under the multifamily MBTA zone, they can't have they can't have-
Any age restrictions.
Yes, but also we're not allowed to have special permit requirements in certain, in general, we're not allowed to have special permit requirements. Now we're having a special permit requirement. So we're already breaching, we're already breaching that.
For the fourth floor.
For the fourth floor. I understand, I just do not want to get, I just do not, do not want to get into any scenario where we think one thing, where it's something different.
So the rest of us, good point, for clarity, the four of, the four of us understand-
To phrase it that way, I understand that there, that there's a multifamily, I understand there's a multifamily underlying MBTA Community Act thing. I just want to be a hundred percent certain that if we go to the fourth floor with a special permit, that doesn't break.
Can we say, proceed back into this discussion?
So in the meantime-
Because you raise a good question. By having the fourth floor be by special permit, are we now violating the MBTA zoning law that says we can't have special permits?
No, because you're, you're only getting credit for the hundred and eighty-seven that's as of right. That's all that's involved. You're not violating it.
And it's therefore permissible, and to your point already, it's not, doesn't have to be age restricted, and their minimum requirement of affordability is twelve point five percent.
I agree with all of that.
To comply with MBTA zoning, we need to allow for a, we need to set a floor for the amount of housing that can be developed. If we want to allow for more than that number, we can do that by special permit.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna beat this, I'm just gonna-
So our floor is based on three stories, and then to get to a hundred and eighty-seven units-
It's a special permit.
They need, they need the fourth floor, and that's where we get to the special permit.
Right.
And they, again, I'm gonna beat this dead horse. Sorry, guys. Sorry. Okay. If they have the fourth floor, what is gonna stop them from looking at the overlay district, which then allowed the mixed, the assisted living memory care, which allowed that? Now we have a fourth floor coming in. We've raised the FAR to one point three. So if I'm one point three in the three floors, one point seven on the fourth floor-
But if they want the one point seven, already they have to go into the MBTA zoning. It's not the underlying district.
Well, I don't, where is it, where does, I don't see-
Three point seventeen point two.
It says it has to go into the multifamily.
In three point seventeen point two, an applicant elects into the multifamily overlay, and then these provisions apply. So if you've elected to pursue a development under this multifamily overlay district, you're looking at this district, not the underlying district that deals with the senior housing. So you wouldn't be eligible for this fourth floor special permit and the one point seven FAR with it, unless you're doing a multifamily development and you're elected into this.
So this language that you're now citing, this is the language that you're, you're presenting for us to be included at some point?
No, no, you, it's in what Hone suggested. In three, the scope of authority says if an applicant elects into, elects to develop a multifamily housing in accordance with three seventeen, the provisions of this district apply. So by making that application, they'd be elect, we would be electing into this.
Sorry, I'm clearly not smart enough. What's gonna like, what's gonna allow, what allows them to not elect to be into that, considering that there's an underlying district which allowed the and/or, and now we're gonna give them one point three? Are we giving them one point-
Because under the underlying district, they can't get to one point seven.
I understand that. I understand that. But are we, yeah, but when, when we're increasing the FAR, I mean, we haven't talked about how we're increasing the FAR, when we're increasing the FAR. We're, so we're talking, this language is gonna be included in the MBTA Community Act?
Yes.
Most. Okay, we've never talked about that. Never talked about that.
There's two different things. There's the, there's the underlying zoning that does not allow this. This is only for MBTA communities. So if you want to go for the MBTA communities, this is what I'm understanding, is that the three floors are as of right, you can get a special permit, but it's only for that type of development. Is that right?
And Tim is correct, that an applicant chooses to use the zoning. And if they choose to use this zoning, there is one principal use that they can make of their property, and that one principal use that is allowed is multifamily housing, which we've now, which we've now defined.
Which does not deal in any way with any kind of senior housing. It could be for families, it could be for anyone.
So, all of the, all of the amendments that Tim has been requesting on this are amendments to section three point one seven only. And those are amendments to the multifamily zoning overlay district. It has, it does not change anything in our current rules for the Avery Square overlay district. All those rules are not being changed by anything that Tim has asked us to change in three point one seven.
However, if a developer of that site wants to exceed the FAR, they want a bigger building, and they want a bigger building than what's permissible under the Avery Square overlay district, then they would naturally, and they would disclose on their building permit and the other documentation, that they're choosing, like Tim said, under this MBTA zoning by law, to utilize that to get that FAR. And to get to that FAR, they'll also disclose in their special permit application that they're also looking for a special permit for a fourth floor in order to achieve the one point seven FAR. They'll naturally need a fourth floor. And again, to your two points, on affordability, it's twelve, a minimum of twelve point five, and there is no age restriction.
So by, but so, but also by having this change to the zoning there with the full floor, to have it tagged with the MBTA Community Act, we cannot restrict, we can have no restrictions at all when they're going to a fourth floor. I guess we're not, I can't, we can't, we can't have restrictions on-
It's a special permit, so you have, you have review. You have some kind of review for a special permit versus as of right.
But, but senior housing, to Artie's point, is not part of it. So Artie, let me, are you asking?
No, so in the, I forgot, in the, in the base plan, the neighborhood plan, they're saying there's not gonna be any additional. What was the, what was the, how many units were counted in the existing protocol, existing building? How many units were coming out of that?
The, the base zoning.
I think the permit was for one hundred and fifty-three between-
So, so we, I mean, we're zoning that for one hundred and fifty-three, so we're-
No, well, I think the MBTA, the way the MBTA zoning works, when that was calculated, and that was calculated at this lower FAR, yielded, I think, a hundred and eighty-seven units there. And essentially, the way that formula works is that you figure out what the FAR is, and that gives you a certain square footage of building, and then you divide that square footage of that building by thousand square feet, and that's how you come up with eighty-seven. So actually, under the model, with this, with this zoning we're revising, that number's gonna go up a little.
And when they did the test fit, they couldn't fit the one eighty-seven. That's why they changed the FAR to one point three, and then with the special permit.
So there's no, so there's no way for us to pull this out as a separate entity with a fourth floor special permit without via, without, without messing with our current count in the MBTA Community Act, because we're counting somewhere. I'm just looking if there's any way to have, get, get, get senior living affordable, you know, any type of age restriction in there. It sounds like this, it doesn't matter what happens, they go to the fourth floor, they can't have an age restriction. Here's a coming out, and if we pull it, and if we pull it out, if we, if we pull it, we got to pull the whole building out to have to be able to allow it.
One second, Paul, please. To your, to your point, if you're advocating that in order to achieve a special permit under this, under this zoning, to achieve a fourth floor and/or the one point seven FAR, technically, I believe, because this is outside of the, you know, we've already satisfied the MBTA compliance, you know, you could make a motion now to include that, that those, to achieve those dimensional regulations, you're required to have senior housing. I don't know that you would get that.
No, you can't do that. And we don't want to make it more restrictive, right?
Well, so one is a policy question, does the board want to do that, which I don't think the board does.
I don't think we can.
We can't do it anyway.
But the other is a legal thing, but, but we already-
The use remains the same. You're talking about building a taller building with an additional story, but the use of the property remains multifamily housing. The use, the fine use, multifamily housing.
Developer can't do that. You can't zone for it, and developer can't do it. If they have the full floor, it doesn't matter. If that, that building itself is in the MBTA Community Act, that developer cannot, no matter what they do, they cannot make a senior living.
The developer can construct an age-
That building would have to be pulled out of the MBTA Community Act.
No, 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 no. The developer can build multifamily housing under this zoning bylaw if they so choose. It's entirely up to them. If they want to try to permit a multifamily building, they can do that under the MBTA zoning bylaw. If the developer instead wants to construct age-restricted housing in this very same building, I believe they have zoning in place-
Yes.
-under the Avery Square overlay district, that they can take advantage of to their heart's content. If they wanted to build, if they wanted, right, they wouldn't be able to build to one point seven FAR, they wouldn't be able to build a fourth story.
No, they would be able to build a fourth story, limited to eleven units.
We are giving the property owner here, if we adopt this new zoning, a menu of choices. They get to choose from it. They don't get to mix partial application of the Avery Square overlay district with partial application of the MBTA zoning. They don't get to do age-restricted housing and multifamily housing. They, 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 there's a couple options, but they gotta choose one or the other. But nothing currently prevents this property owner, if they wanted to, to develop age-restricted housing. And nothing will prevent them from doing that. If we adopt this zoning, it's entirely elective on the property owner's choice, what they want to, what set of rules they want to-
Even though they opt into the multi, they're opting into the multifamily, they can do age restriction.
Once they make-
No, they can't.
I heard, I heard you say they can do that.
They choose to do the other zone.
They can't do, they can't do both.
They choose their zone.
You don't have to talk like that, okay? I heard something different. Okay? I heard something different.
They can develop age-restricted housing under the Avery Square overlay district, or they can develop multifamily housing without age restriction under MBTA zoning. They can't do both, and they can't do a combination of the two. They can do one or the other, and it's entirely up to them.
So I just want to go back to Tim, because he was saying, we were just saying that we were gonna do a step back of a fourth floor for a special permit. He had Highland before, and we said we'd also think West Street would be appropriate, and he included it. They don't have any issues with it. I just want to make sure that everyone's okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
The next one is actually controversial.
Well, I don't think it's that controversial. I know, this one wasn't supposed to be, Artie.
Hey, hey, trust me, when, when, when Andor's floating in there, I'm not gonna let up until it's positive.
There's no Andor in here.
Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter. There's something else in there.
The modified FAR about to apply to interior portions of building for off-street parking or screened garages unless a special permit is obtained. And so maybe we should, Tim, do you want to go through what you're thinking that the changes are?
Yeah, so, sure. So this was a comment that we talked about. You know, my initial comment to the board was that the parking garages would be excluded from the calculation of FAR. And at the last meeting, we had a, a long discussion about how that would work, and I think the concern expressed by the board was that if it's going to be excluded in an as-of-right scenario, the garage would need to be screened. That was something that the board was focused on. So the change that I proposed, and I think Lee had pointed out that the interior portions of building used for parking seemed to be settled, that that was okay to exclude from, from FAR. So the edits that I had submitted in response to that discussion say that garages that are screened or parking on the interior portions of the building would be excluded from FAR. And if you were trying to exclude something else, a portion of the garage that's not screened, you'd need to get a special permit. So those, that's the edit that I've proposed in response to that discussion. We do, we do need to carve a garage out of FAR to make it work on this site, given how constrained it is. So we're trying to work within that and address the board's concern of screening, and so that, that was sort of what I, that's what I'm proposing.
And so I just want to remind everyone, on the left-hand side, we have a hundred and ten-foot setback. In the front, we have ten feet, fifteen feet at seventy percent, and the same thing on the West Street side. In the back is a twenty-foot setback. So what's left of the site is pretty, pretty small. So anything, so my thought is that it's fine, because it's not a huge site like Muzzy or something where you can put parking garages in different locations. I, I mean, there's not that much left of the site. So I would be fine with the, with what they're proposing. The only piece that I would say, Tim, that I would feel comfortable with is saying that we don't want to park any part of the parking garage on one of the two streets, because the experience of walking by the building with a parking garage-
I'm fine if it's screened.
Well, that's a question that we should have.
I mean, I'm fine if it's screened, too. I think we're, this, this issue, I think that we're, I agree with Adam, that I think that we're, we're imposing restrictions that are a little bit counter, counter to what we need. We, we need this place developed, and I think that we need to. But, and I, I actually don't have a problem if any parking structures are not included in FAR. That's how I personally feel. I, I agree with, with the edit of these, if Tim's fine with that. But I, naturally, they're not gonna put the garage on Highland Avenue, just not, if it's screened, sure, but naturally, you want to put it against the T. You know what I mean? That's where you have your vibration, your noise, your noises. You're not putting, you know, units right against it.
We can't, we can't, we don't have any say.
Sure, exactly, sure. But I don't, I think by putting, it's what we did with Chestnut Street. We're just doing too much restriction, and we, we're-
I'm fine with the way it is. That was my only concern. So if everyone thinks that it's fine the way it is-
I'm, I'm fine the way it is. I'm even fine if it's less restrictive, but that's, that's where I am.
I'm with Justin.
Okay. So any concerns from Paul? Or from Artie?
The only concern is that we don't have a plan, we don't, we have no plan in front of us, so we have no idea what it's gonna look like.
I understand.
I mean, we, obviously, we have the requirement for the maximum space, the, we take it up on the lot. Now, that's not being addressed here, so that's, but there is a maximum amount of space that can take up a lot. And I think parking garages are accounted to that. Is that correct?
I reckon it does count towards lock coverage.
Well, there is no lock coverage.
Yeah, they go count, what's that?
There is not a lock coverage requirement here at all.
But you already have a hundred and ten feet back on one side, and you have setbacks, and it's a very specific-
Setbacks are defining the lock coverage, but yes.
Yeah, the setbacks are defining the lock coverage. I'm, I'm fine with it.
I ended, what I was gonna say is that I understand Natasha's concern, that as you're walking along Highland Avenue, it's a pedestrian area, you're walking along Highland Avenue on that sidewalk next to the building. Natasha's saying she doesn't want people to be turning to their right or their left and seeing cars in a parking garage. And these guys are saying, well, if it's screened, well, a screen just means that you're still seeing the cars. The cars are still there right against the sidewalk, but you're looking through a screen to see them. And that's, that's a question of aesthetics.
It's aesthetic. I don't have a problem with that.
I know, I know you don't.
I guess I have a question for Chris, is, when we have site plan review, if we say that it's screened, do we have any say on what the screening looks like?
Or which side of the building?
Well, the design review board does.
Yes.
Because if we do, then I would be okay with it, because then we would have a say.
I guess it is, you, I mean, there's one or two approach, one or two approaches. You can leave it to conditioning as part of site plan review, or you can address it specifically in the bylaw itself. If you know, as a board, what type of screening, what quality, quantity, and type of screening you would be looking for in a multi-story parking structure that is right on Highland, you, you know, it is likely better to put it, spell that out in the bylaw itself, because then there can be no disagreement later on about what is expected of the applicant.
You know, ALC specifically said to that point that if you're gonna have site plan review as modified, that it needs to be unequivocally objective. And so, you know, if we are gonna allow it on the two side streets, I mean, on Highland or West, we say screening, we're, you know, we could spell out the minimums, objective standard of what screened means, and what would satisfy the board of what screening, what screening, right? So, but I, I mean, Tim's not asking for more than that.
I don't see, I don't see why they're asking, Tim, I don't see why you're asking for possible parking on Highland Avenue, West Street. Side of the building is screened. Yeah, I'm like-
So I, I don't-
I understand that, but we're also saying, do we really want that? You know, they come to us, but do we want that? I, I want this building built. We want that, we love it, love the partial backed off fourth floor. Love that. The existing building, I thought it had underground parking. Not sure why we're giving an allowance for parking that we don't necessarily want.
Just to clarify what we're, what we're asking?
No, 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 so there's, there's the FAR, okay, so there's a piece of the FAR that the parking is not included in the FAR. Well, I think most of us are okay with that, right? So then my only question was, uh, do we want to say that we just don't, that, that structured parking or deck rooftop parking are screened from Highland, is screened from Highland Avenue and Needham Heights Common, which is what Tim already has in, in his recommendation. Do we want to have an additional saying, we don't want to see a parking garage on either one of those streets? So it has to happen in board of the, of the building?
Well, certainly, we definitely want to say that.
Well, the reason we, may I chime in on this? The, the, the reason we're suggesting screening is that I understand that, um, uh, what you're saying on, about not having it on there. But if you have a structure, first of all, you know, you're not gonna have the apartments or the, the multifamily units on the tracks and have the parking garage on Highland. You just never do that. You, you're gonna have, you know, a setback here. And then, just given the geometry and the constraints on the site with 110 feet, the 20 off the MBTA, there's only so much site. So at some point, I don't know what proximity that garage is gonna have to Highland. So to say it's not on Highland or not on West, it might be. But if you go to like Charles River Landing, for example, and you walk down, you know, one side of that building, you're walking down the side of the garage, but it looks like you're walking down multifamily units. So, that may be the condition, and is that garage on Highland? I guess, but this is where we have to be able to say it's screened and can't say that the garage isn't on Highland because at what point is it on Highland or not? The site's only so wide. So we need to be very careful, or effectively, what's gonna happen is this project is no longer as of right. It's a special permit, because you need to park this in a garage.
Hold on, Artie, let him finish. Yeah.
Well, I mean, just given the constraints of this site, you need structured parking to build multifamily here. There's just, with 110-foot setback on the side and open space, a 20-foot setback off the MBTA, and, you know, the, the setbacks off Highland and West, there's just no real estate to do it without structured parking it. I mean, I think-
What about, what about underground parking?
Underground is, underground, that's not a problem.
No, underground, underground.
But they don't have, but they don't have a design yet, so there might be that they have partial underground and not underground. What we're trying to get to, I think, right now is the FAR is part of it, which I think we all agree on. The second part is, I think, screening, screening, maybe it's just the way that it's written. Maybe it's screening that is compatible with the building or something like that, you know, so that, which is what you're trying to say, Tim, that it could be, you know.
Yep. That, that, I think screening compatible with the building is fine.
I don't, for my own part, know what you're all thinking of when we're using the word screening. I mean, that could be vegetative cover all of the sides of the, you know, of the obscene, of the parking garage. It could mean slats, you know, running vertically between the concrete floors so that you can only barely see the cars that are parked in there. It could mean, um, you know, a facade that looks like housing, but is just false. So, I, I don't know if you, as a board, want to decide what that would look like now or include some guiding language in the bylaw that would sort of give you, or point the applicant to what you're all thinking of, or if you want to leave it all wide open. I, if you have, but if you do have something in mind, it's, you know, it's probably better to include some instruction in the bylaw. If, because now is your, your opportunity to do it.
I don't, I don't like to do that because it may take a few years for the developer to put his plans together and, you know, and actually get this done and get it in front of us. And what's available for screening today may not be the screening that's available two, three, four, or five years from now. And so we restrict what the screening can be. And yet, when they actually come before us, there's additional screening that is fine for us, but we've already set limits that don't allow us to, to do this new potential screening that we go, that's nice. And again, I get back to the fact that it's aesthetics. I'm remembering back to having a discussion with a former member of this board about a parking garage that you can see from the Mass Pike that has slats in it. And this other board member was raving about how beautiful that was and how that worked. And I'm sitting there thinking, that parking garage is the ugliest thing I've ever seen in my life.
So maybe, yeah, so based on that, do you think that we should basically say the screening, that, you know, maybe that doesn't allow full view of the cars or something to that effect, so that it could be different types of screening?
Or just a screen, you know, merges in with the visuals, looking like the facade of a building? What's, what's like the, what's like the side of the building?
I think to Natasha's point, we're true. Aesthetically, we don't want to see anything with cars.
What's the goal of it, right?
Right, exactly.
What the goal of it is to not, you know, to, to, to feel like it's more pedestrian than vehicular on those two streets?
Could I, could I suggest that the language that, Natasha, you had proposed that compatible with the building might be the best option? Because I, I do think that flexibility is important. There is no design. But I think compatible with the building sort of strikes that balance. That, that would be what I would propose based on this discussion.
I agree with that. Do you agree with that?
So how does it read then, that sentence, that portion then?
Parking garage is structured parking that are screened in a manner, in a manner compatible from the building. Okay, excuse me, screened in a manner compatible with the building from Highland Avenue and Needham Heights Common.
With the upper levels, upper, upper, upper levels in the building? Is compatible, what does compatible mean?
I think it's compatible with the architecture of the building, maybe?
Yeah, compatible with the architecture of the building.
Yeah, screening compatible with the architecture of the building.
What did you say, Chris?
Justin suggested that this could be handled through the RV, and I just reminded him it's advisory. It's purely advisory.
There was something that you did take off, Tim, here. We said, as shown, as shown in the design guidelines adopted for the Needham Center Overlay District. And you did lead at that.
Yeah, I, sure. The reason is because in this situation, you're in a special permit anyway. So you're getting the planning board's approval, and I didn't want to, that's a different district. It's a different context. It's a different area. In this case, we'd be proposing a special permit, and the planning board would be looking at it. So I didn't think that, I hope that added confusion and some specificity that wasn't relevant to this site because it's designed for a different area of town.
Okay. I, I feel okay. It's one site. We know that it's already restricted. I feel fine with this.
Just keep in mind, residents are gonna be highly pointing at this, looking at this to make sure that nothing gets through, that nothing gets in there, that they are not, they are gonna be, I mean, everyone's gonna be, the lobby seminar will be unhappy, but they remember what happened. They do not want it to happen again. They want something that works with the neighborhood, that visually works. We know almost anything that's there will probably look better than the current building, the current building. But they want something that is not gonna be objectionable by having any type of view of any type of parking structure. So the, the bottom half of the floor is screened, the top half is not screened, so you can see the, so you can see the ceiling of the parking garage. Okay? So they do not want to see that. They do not want to see that.
But I feel comfortable with what we just decided. Do you feel comfortable with that, and then we can?
We'll see what happens. I, I see what the public says. Is this gonna go to the public?
It's gonna go to the public, which is what we need to get to here next, which is the motion for the article.
I move to, I move to accept the changes as recommended by Attorney Tim Sullivan. Second.
Okay, so the motion was made by Adam, seconded by Justin. Any questions? Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're unanimous. The motion was approved to accept the recommendations of Tim Sullivan with the-
Yeah, with the, with the added-
With the added changes.
The change we made tonight.
Okay. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, so then the third thing, well, there's, is the motion, is there a motion to send the article as revised to the Select Board under 48 for the purpose of holding a public hearing on September 5th on the zoning at Broad Menor School? Well, everyone wants it to be.
So moved.
Okay, I'm gonna give it to Justin this time, and Adam's gonna second it. It's like the, the duo, the dynamic duo here, okay? Um, any questions of discussion? Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, um, so the motion was approved unanimously to send the article as revised to the Select Board.
Can we skip over the site plan approval framework?
Then that's the, no, now the next thing Chris is dying to do for us is an overview of the site plan approval framework and planning board permitting authority, which is kind of, we've already discussed a lot of it, but-
Sure, and, yeah, so I was just gonna offer a, some brief, a brief rundown of site plan review and how it works and what your powers and authority is. And in particular, to sort of flag some of the differences between site plan review and special permit review. This is important for purposes of the MBTA zoning or will be when, when it's adopted because under MBTA zoning, the planning board can require site plan approval for projects under MBTA, under the MBTA zoning, but it cannot require a special permit. This is also important, I think particularly important in Needham because there's a longstanding practice in town of the planning board doing both site plan approval and special permit review at the same time. I think most, in my experience, at least, most important projects in town require both. And the bylaws sort of have you do it all at the same time. So when that happens, the sort of differences between the two levels of review sort of goes out the window by design. I don't mean that, I don't mean that in any negative way. But it sort of, it creates a situation where you, you don't really need to pay attention to the differences between the two levels of review. So I'm gonna go through those briefly now. Just to start, special permits are a type of zoning relief that is specifically provided for and authorized under Chapter 48. It's in Chapter 48, Section 9. And the key feature of a special permit is that it applies to a use that may be allowed in some cases and may be disallowed in other cases. And ultimately, that turns on the discretion of the permitting board. So the use may be suitable in some cases, it may not, but it effectively comes to the planning board, and it's up to you guys to decide, given the facts of the property and the use and the conditions that are imposed or agreed to by the applicant. You basically get to decide whether the use passes muster and whether the use to go forward. Site plan approval is different. Site plan review is a type of review that is applied to a use that is allowed by right under the zoning. It interestingly does not exist in Chapter 48 and is essentially a process that was invented by numerous local zoning bylaws all over Massachusetts some time ago. Because a site plan approval is a, a type of review applied to a use allowed by right, it can only involve reasonable regulation of the use and it can just about never involve the actual denial or prohibition of the use. Quick bit of history, one of the earliest cases about site plan review was Prudential versus Westwood from 1986. In that case, the planning board argued that it had discretion to deny a site plan application out of concern for a project's traffic impacts. The Supreme Judicial Court ruled in that case that there was no power to deny site plan review for a by right use. And it noted, I think the quote is helpful, that the planning board's argument that it had the ability to deny site plan approval misconceives the limited nature of the regulation and that it was settled law that a use allowed by right cannot be made subject to the grant of a special permit because the concepts of a use allowed by right and a use dependent on discretion of the permitting board are mutually exclusive. So, reasonable regulation, not outright prohibition is the first, I think, important thing to keep in mind.
This came up before with the board. Can you explain precisely what reasonable regulation is?
I don't think anybody can.
No, I mean, yes, yes, I know. I don't mean to be facetious.
What is the court, for, what does the court mean when it refers to reasonable regulation?
I would say that reasonable regulation involves imposing conditions on a use that are responsive to specific impacts associated with the use on a particular piece of property. And that don't go so far as to interfere with the use itself or the density of the use that's allowed under the zoning, or, you know, effectively what is the use that is allowed by right. I, I have an example of that that I can, that I can get to, which is the case of Castle Hill Apartments versus Planning Board of Holyoke from 2006. In that case, there was a multifamily housing project that was subject to site plan review. The original application was for 123 units of multifamily housing, which was within the tolerance of what was allowed under the zoning. The applicant came in for site plan review, and the planning board imposed a number of conditions on the project. The conditions added up and taken together had the effect of reducing the number of units that could be put on the property. The conditions had, were all styled as things addressing visual impacts, environmental concerns, and architectural design. But the ultimate result was the loss of, I think, upwards of 30 units that would have otherwise been allowed. The appeals court reversed the planning board's decision and said that those conditions went beyond the scope of the reasonable regulation that we're talking about here. In particular, because issues of density and use had been resolved by the town as a legislative matter at town meeting before the site plan application was ever-
To say that our existing zoning bylaw, the dimensional regulations of the use tables are themselves considered therefore reasonable regulations?
Yes. Yeah, so when we're talking about, so yes, the, to your point, any objective dimensional regulation that is gonna be contained in this zoning or any other zoning, which is to say maximum height of 40 feet or minimum setback of 10 feet. Those are reasonable regulations. You can apply those easily. The, the interesting question when performing site plan review is what conditions would also constitute reasonable regulations and what might go beyond the scope of that, that authority? So quickly backing up one step, I said at the outset that site plan review by right can't deny it. There are two exceptions to that general rule that I just wanted to note. One is, so these are the two scenarios in which a site plan review application could permissively be denied. One is easy. It's when the applicant fails to submit all the information that is required under the bylaw. So you've got a list of application requirements. The applicant must comply with those or otherwise a denial would be appropriate. The second is so rare that I sort of hesitate to even mention it, but it's in the case law, so you should know about it. That is where a project, a particular project presents a problem that is so big that it cannot be solved through the imposition of conditions on the project. In the Prudential case from 86, the court said in some cases, the site plan, although proper in form, may be so intrusive on the interests of the public in one regulated aspect or another, that rejection by the board would be tenable. This would typically be a case which despite best efforts, no form of reasonable conditions could be devised to satisfy the problem with the plan, and the judge conducting the review concurs in that conclusion. Term for this type of denial in the case law is an intractable problem, which is just another way of saying a problem that you can't solve through conditions. But-
Which is not to say stormwater management down the road.
So, the applicant, you will have a criteria contained in this bylaw and your existing site plan review bylaw that you apply all the time that is going to say that the applicant must comply with all applicable stormwater regulations. You can hold them to that when performing site plan review. And if they come in with a plan that doesn't comply with all applicable stormwater regulations and you have engineering tell you that is so- tell you that is so, you can impose a condition that says the applicant must revise its plans to achieve compliance with all applicable stormwater regulations. What you can't do is say, denied, go away. Because the condition is gonna, you know, you've identified an impact, the impact is stormwater. You address that impact by telling the applicant to comply with the relevant standard.
And they need to comply by when? By the time of the building permits issued?
So with these types of projects in particular, you're gonna be under a pretty, well, stricter than you're used to deadline for closing out the public hearing and issuing a decision. Sometimes you're gonna have an applicant that is going to be sufficiently responsive that they're gonna come back in two weeks later with a revised plan and your engineering's gonna say it's fine and you're gonna approve that plan. But I think what, well, what you see often in other places is that you don't get that final site plan that looks perfect before you close your public hearing or before you issue your decision, and what you do in that scenario is you write a written approval decision that says you're gonna take last revised August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, and you're going to make the following changes to it. And you issue that, that's your approval decision, and then the applicant needs to take that written decision and a new revised plan that complies with everything you told them to do to the building commissioner's office, and that will entitle them to issuance of a building permit without further review from this board, because you, as the site plan review authority, will, under MBTA zoning at least, need to be done with it. You can't say, come back in six months and show us.
The building department has to confirm that it meets all the requirements.
Presumably, the building department is gonna similarly enlist the help of engineering and engineering's gonna say it's okay or meets the standard that you've held them to and you're writing the decision.
But we don't, we don't, we don't have, we have no accountability. It's the building department.
But if the engineering department comes back and says it still doesn't meet the requirements, then the building commissioner denies the building permit and.
We've done our job.
So we've done our job.
And Chris is saying, we've done our job.
Right, these things don't comply and then the building department has to confirm that they do comply in order to give a permit.
And if he says it doesn't comply, then I guess the developers' recourse then is to appeal to the ZBA.
Correct.
Right.
And then the court.
Which would review the case on the standard of whether or not they achieved compliance with your decision. The ZBA would sort of sit as a court reviewing whether they've complied with what you told them to do. So those are the two scenarios in which you can deny a site plan approval, but I just wanna really caution that the intractable problem one is one that arises incredibly rarely and I can't actually point you easily to a decision where that standard was met.
I was gonna ask.
No.
I'm sure I can find.
I've, I've, I've looked.
None, none that you find, you can't prove a negative.
I've looked, I couldn't point you to one off the top of my head, but they don't, they don't arise and the, you know, on an appeal, in an appeal, the judge is going to have the expectation that you should have included conditions if it was at all possible to do that rather than deny the use.
Can you talk a little bit about, I know one of the elements was traffic, and I know that my understanding is really on the property itself, circulation, et cetera, maybe more under the purview of site plan review and under reviewing, but once you drive off the driveway and you're on Highland Avenue West Street, there is almost zero that can be.
It is not, unfortunately, it is not quite as straightforward as that.
Okay.
It is, it is, I think, a little bit more nuanced, but, and the case law is, you know, a bit of a mess in terms of precisely defining what is permissible as a condition, what is, what is not.
Sure.
It is absolutely true that any changes you wanna make and that are supported by traffic engineering or civil engineering or anything else within the site, I think is, is easy and perfectly fine. You know, move the parking from this side of the lot over to this side of the lot to avoid the neighbor over here, fine. Put up some fencing to shield the glare of the headlights that are otherwise gonna be pointing into traffic, fine. Move the curb cut if there's, you know, not an existing curb cut, but, you know, they're, they're adding one. You know, we've.
They would have to do, they would have to do, they would have to give us the information of what moving that curb cut.
We've got expert engineering-based testimony that says the curb cut would, you know, better serve vehicular circulation over here. That is a permissible condition to include as part of site plan approval. Now, off-site traffic improvements are a much trickier, a much trickier thing. There is case law on both sides. There is case law that says a planning board when performing site plan review can require some form of off-site traffic improvements. There is case law that says site plan review should be strictly limited to the four corners of the lot itself.
Right, okay. So in order to say, oh, hey, so you should put a Hawk Crossing, you know, just like, you know, that was, that was on, on Green Deal, that's obviously two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and putting that as might, might be looked at as a, as a burden on, on a developer. However, you know, what, you know, that is in front of, let's say, a site, you know, can we, is that, is that a permissible?
I think I'm gonna have to punt on exactly what is permissible and what's not.
And that's okay.
But I, but I, the guidelines that would be important to keep in mind when thinking about this a year or two years from now for a particular project would, I think, be that, you know, we are, when adopting the zoning, making the legislative decision that at one hundred West Street, there can be a hundred and eighty-seven residential dwelling units, right? To some extent, that comes with the understanding legislatively that we're gonna be accommodating a hundred and eighty-seven dwelling units worth of traffic at that site, and that applies to all of the other properties that we're rezoning in town. But if there is a traffic report specific to the site that says, you know, it is just not gonna work if we add those, you know, a hundred and eighty-seven units to that site without, you know, something off-site, you know, there is, I think enough in the case law for us to sort of, through site plan review, have that conversation with the applicant.
If it's a turnoff, that's, in other words, if you have, let's say, the intersection at West and Central Ave, right around the corner from where I used to live, let's say it had a level of service right now of a C, and as, and I don't think this is the case, but if it were the case that a hundred and eighty-seven units or two hundred and five units on a hundred West, suddenly there was so much traffic coming from Central Ave, the level of service went from C to D, what is a turn-on for the town to exercise authority to, or what authority does the town have to require at least an improvement to return to the level of service of C even though it's half a mile or close to a mile down the road?
So I think that, I mean, any hypothetical like the one you just provided is gonna be complicated in the traffic analysis by the fact that background traffic growth is gonna have contributed to deterioration of the intersection, at least in part. It is, I think, you're, you are rarely going to see a traffic report, in my experience, that attributes a, you know, two-letter grade or one-letter grade signal deterioration entirely to a project. You know, you're gonna see that the, you know, that signal is gonna deteriorate in service if nothing gets built at that property ever. So you have to, I think, as, at least as a starting point, it is important to parse carefully what, exactly what impacts are attributable to the, to the, to the proposed site plan as opposed to other uses that are going in town, other existing uses in town and background traffic growth. Now.
Yeah, I don't think you'd be able to.
But where I'm ultimately going with this is, we're saying, we'll let, you know, we'll deal with it when it comes a year or two from now, but I think for the purposes of town meeting in October, we've already heard from members, you know, of the public that have opposed this because we don't have, the town doesn't have the authority to mitigate off-site impacts, and the two off-site impacts that in particular are, you know, are of note, are stormwater management, which we've already addressed, and, and traffic. And there's a perception of traffic and there's a reality of traffic, and I think you're saying we have to back out the underlying background development that's already occurring from the surrounding area, which I agree with, but I do think when it comes time for presenting this, whoever is at town meeting, wanna be able to speak knowledgeably about what the boundaries are of our authority in dealing with off-site mitigation.
If we get some new case law between now and town meeting that precisely defines what can and can't be done, that, that will be easy to do. If we don't, that will not.
So you, so there's nothing in the case law that makes it, that identifies what it turns on for when the municipality has the authority and when it doesn't?
We have some leverage through site plan review to require some off-site traffic improvements if they are feasible, you know, sufficiently affordable that they're not gonna make the project uneconomic and do, you know, something that can be achieved by the applicant and is responsive specifically to the, well, responsive to the specific impacts contributed to the road system by the particular project. All of that is going to be studied on an application-by-application basis when people apply for site plan review, and it's gonna be supported by an expert traffic report.
Why don't you just add those three elements? Can you, like, can we record those or write those down?
I don't, I don't mean those to be exhaustive and I don't mean those to be binding.
That's fine, we, we can say that they are not, but I think it's important that we provide this framework that you've just identified, which, which includes, you know, there is, there is a, a professional that has identified a specific problem arising as a result of these plans, as a result of a potential development, and two, that, that, you know, that are, I didn't say reasonable with circumstance, but, you know, I get, almost like economically, you know, reasonable to do, and then there was the first one that you said too, but if we should time, like, record, like, at nine oh six, if you were, you just, you just basically gave a framework, fine to say it's not exhaustive.
It can be gray, but at least it's something to, to base it on, which is what you're trying to say.
The reality of things is you're never gonna get a consultant that's gonna, within the timeframe of site plan review, that's gonna be able to do a traffic analysis, it's gonna, you know, we're talking about this, but the reality is we're never gonna be able to have that.
The traffic analysis is part of the application.
Sure, that's, that's, that's the developer submitting. To have then, you know, to have our engineering then vet it, I mean, there's, there's, that's, this is not special permit, this is, you know, what's the timeframe, forty-five days? You said.
No, it's sixty, it's six months to make a decision.
It's six months.
I mean, we make decisions really much faster than the.
DRB's gotta, DRB's gotta get back to you. Oh, DRB's thirty-five days.
We have six months, so.
All right, so that's, that's fine.
No, and, and the required traffic, I would, I would expect as a practical matter that the required traffic study that comes in with the application is gonna include at least the developer's list of proposed mediation networks.
And they will, yeah.
And we will, as always is, is done, you know, engineering will look at that and decide whether that's suitable and sufficient or whether more needs to be done. If, you know, if it's gonna require another lane of traffic to be added to Highland Avenue, like, that's beyond the bounds of reasonable regulation, we're not gonna be able to, you know, require that of, of anybody. But if it's, you know, addition of some signage and, you know, small, what I would describe as small, small-scale mediation efforts could almost certainly be required of an applicant as part of site plan review, even when you're not doing a special permit.
So what happened if, after, after the buildings build or even that we know that significant work has to be done, but that it's not reasonable for the developer, will the town make it a priority to do something about it because, you know, I mean?
I mean, I. Sit on my other committee, but yeah.
I mean, don't hold me to this, but I, I think I recall from the traffic, from the impact memorandum that was performed, that was created as part of the home process, you know, there are, there are street scape, you know, studies undergoing.
Well, we have, we have GPI in our next meeting that's got a traffic study of the impacts of this, of what the home is proposing under the anticipated build-out, which I think they can inform you in terms of what's actually anticipated of these impacts. Okay, so.
I was going to point out that on the one hundred West Street, partly because they've been in front of us before, you know, I think we already know that, that project is very unlikely to have an impact at the intersection of Central Avenue and West Street, but it's going to have a huge impact at the intersection of Highland Avenue and West Street and especially Hillside and West Street, and to some extent, no, 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 and to some extent, the MBTA crossing. And, you know, we all ought to keep that in the back of our minds that, because it looks like we are going to get something in front of us, hopefully, we're gonna get something in front of us for that project, and that's gonna be a huge, that's, that's a problem intersection now and the building's empty.
Right. So we have, that's one of the things we put in there is that we wanna make sure that this traffic is done by a professional engineer.
Right.
Because we, we need that information to be able to determine.
And what we can force, and I, I particularly see it as a problem not so much at Highland Avenue because the town is already trying to, finding ways to, to improve that, that intersection, but I think the intersection of Hillside and West Street is very much gonna be problematic.
So last night, the Select Board approved a four-way stop sign there that was recommended by the Transportation Safety Committee.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so they, they approved the regulation change, the implementation is, and they're also gonna be doing the queue, the study of the queue, because one of the biggest issues is whether cars will back up into the railroad track slot, that's gonna be monitored, et cetera, but that's, that's going on. There's also tip, grant, tip funding, as you mentioned, but the, the state already is, they're already securing funding to redo each of the intersections and have those, have those signals be coordinated, which is actually one thing that isn't, doesn't happen, Newton's traffic just kind of dumps into Needham at the bylaws and then there's no coordination or anything. So that's all mid-middle term, but that is all being done regardless of who moves into one hundred West.
Right.
And so the, but the four-way should be in the next month.
We may need a traffic light there.
Okay, but we're not gonna solve this right now with trying to figure out how we're gonna deal with MBTA.
A traffic engineer already said that's not, not allowable.
Not allowable?
Not allowable, because it's too, it's too close to, it didn't meet the warrant, it's too close to the rail trap, the right-of-way as well as did not meet the warrant in terms of, you can't take asymmetrical traffic patterns, and we don't talk about this other, but it needs to be equal and there are.
There's no way to do it.
They're not equal right now.
Interesting.
Justin has the N on traffic. Now we know.
I do kinda know something, I know something.
Yeah. So Chris.
So that's something.
Well, let's, then let's talk about it after discussion, but just, anything else that you wanted to, for us to know?
No, I had more, but you, your question.
But it's time to end this conversation.
No, 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 we sort of bounced around a little bit, but your question, the questions you all asked, I think, anticipated where I was going.
Your question was really helpful for all of us to be able to clarify.
Why accomplish my.
Thank you.
What was that?
All of them, Artie, all of them were excellent and we've resolved them, so we need to move on. Okay, so with that, thank you, Chris, and I really appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
And, and so we're all set with Chris, and so I think that concludes our MBTA community's discussion for, for tonight.
Chris, you have such fun when you come here, I know that.
Yeah. So, so the next item is the Board of Appeals for the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-fourth meeting, and there were three different items there. One was twenty Alderbrook Road, which we already reviewed last time, the two seventy-seven Brookline, which we already reviewed last time. So the only one is the six Brook Road on the one twenty-eight district for a dog boarding grooming business.
Yeah.
Which Lee recommended no comment unless somebody really has.
I move no comment.
No comment.
You wanna wait for Adam to come out?
Yeah, Adam.
Adam, we've got business here. We're gonna vote without you, Adam. We're voting without you.
Okay, so everyone agrees with that? Okay. So everyone agrees with that? That no comments on the six Brook Road for the dog boarding?
Yes, that's the residential one that's been continued.
Okay.
No, no, no.
No, it's a dog grooming.
This, this is the dog grooming one.
Oh, oh, sorry. I.
So a motion is made to say no comment.
Second.
We have a second.
Okay. So motion for no comment by Paul? Okay. Second by Justin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So no comment, Lee, please? And then, um, the next thing is we discussed the, um, large house study committee charging committee composition at the last meeting. Any questions on this and?
I, I actually have, I know that I would, I, I had, I think we need to take a look at the membership, because I still, even though I, I took away the legal room voters or recommended that, um, with thirteen people, a doodle poll won't even be able to be done, um, within like.
Lee, what, what did we do for the, for, for, for home? How many people do we have?
Four hundred and twenty-two.
Uh, nine.
I mean that, but that was a required thing that we needed to do.
Nine is what my hate for rain says, but I can check.
I mean, thirteen is a.
I agree.
Oh, unwieldy, uh, you know, number.
In the charge now?
Yes.
With the large house?
Yes.
Yes. So at the last meeting, we went through and reviewed the, the, the charge and the composition. And, um, so Lee made those changes, but Justin, I'm hearing feels that it's still pretty heavy.
I, well, I mean, I, I think there are certain things that will like, the large house study committee can still get from historic commission. They can get and, and get an opine off them. But the, but the historic commission doesn't need to be on the committee. But they can, if there was something that we can, you know, get from them, okay, we'll get from them. You know, I mean, even, even DRB to some extent, you know, they should be able to opine on whatever, whatever thing. So I think that we can grab, we can turn some of these membership into SMEs.
I like, I think DRB is important.
Okay. And that's, but, but some should be subject matter experts that they can be used to, you know, advise. But do we need to have two plannings and two select boards?
That was requested. Actually formally.
By who?
With the select board. They wanted two people.
Okay.
They, I mean, they asked for it.
So let me.
Yeah, maybe we can take off historic commission. I was wondering why.
Yeah, well, I think we could probably take off the historic commission.
What about ZBA?
ZBA, I think is actually relevant because they, actually before I speak, I have to, I do have to say something. Cause I think there was a question about the validity of my ability to be able to, um, um, participate in this discussion based on my occupation. And I've spoken to, uh, Chris Heap, the town attorney about this. I had previously spoken to the, um, ethics, uh, office as well. And just for the record to note that I've accepted, um, it's not normally a place to announce, you know, uh, job statuses or changes on our LinkedIn profile, but I've, I've accepted a position, it's a brand new position as the director of real estate for a nonprofit, uh, base in Boston that, um, develops, uh, low income housing for our most vile, uh, vulnerable in our community. Um, and I'm no longer serving as an active real estate agent. Um, uh, so, uh, in, in the sense of like, I'm not trading right now in Needham. I'm not, you know, you know, I don't really have plans to and so forth either. So on that basis, you know, whatever concerns some may have had, for instance, about my participation either on the committee or on, as a board member discussing this issue, uh, has been resolved. Uh, there is no appearance of a conflict. There is no conflict. And, uh, uh, town council will provide a letter for the file to that effect, um, which will be coming imminently. So.
So you can be on the clinic?
Well, I'm going to choose not to be, uh, uh, but.
You can comment as part of the planning board.
Yeah, but I, yeah, but I can comment as part of the planning board. And I, I do. Uh, and, and to that point, I, I think it becomes, I, I have several comments about the charge. And to, to Justin's point, I think such a large committee for this particular issue, I, I'm not sure that we need, it's, I worry that having thirteen members is going to protract this thing and we're not going to have anything of significance available for town meeting. Uh, you know, next year, either, uh, you know, May or October. And I would support reducing the number of people as possible. I was not aware, Lee, like you had said, that the select boards requested two members. I do see a role that the ZBA plays because as we've seen in our packet, they actually provide variances and in particular special permits on a number of cases dealing with housing that deals with size and so on. And they do have special permit granting authority over residential single family lots. So I think they do serve a valuable role. Um, I agree that, uh, um, the historic, you know, we can, we can consult with them.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm not sure that we have a need for FinCom on this. Particularly if we have a, um, but I'm, but I'm open to it if the rest of the board wants it. We will need a fiscal impact analysis, specifically although we talk about it. I think we need a fiscal impact analysis on two elements. One, on the element of what the acquired lot, the value of the acquired lot is. And two, the value of the, of the value, uh, of the new home that's going to be sold on the market. Because that's ultimately what we're talking about and that's where we're going to have the greatest impact. I also, to that point, it talks somewhere earlier about the, uh, this to the detriment of the town's goals on affordability and sustainability. I want to be really clear with the planning board and with the public that the, our ability to reduce, this is very simply and only about reducing the box, the size of the box on the lot. Period. To connotate or to connect elements of affordability or sustainability into this goal of reducing the size of the box in the lot is bogus at best. We're talking about ultimately reducing the size of a home. And maybe instead of it being marketed as seven thousand square feet, it's now marketed at fifty-five hundred square feet. But a fifty-five hundred square foot house in Needham, brand new, is millions and millions of dollars. I can pull up now and tell you the last one that sold. And it's a fiction in every way to say that that is an affordable house. It's more affordable to the wealthy. So they're not paying, they may not be paying three point eight million. They might be paying two point eight million. But to say two point eight million is an affordable house does not in any way relate to the affordability goals of our town, which is to.
So which part of this are you trying to change though?
So I would, I would, I would strike.
We, we need to, that's part of the.
Well, I'd like to get this thing maybe wrapped up tonight if we can.
Yeah. So what, what, okay, so.
I would.
I just want to go directly to it because some of this stuff is going to be decided by the committee, right? Or, you know, discuss with the committee.
But we're voting this charge, so I'm reckon.
No, no, no. So right. So what part are you not comfortable with?
So I would strike the last sentence that says this is to the detriment. And I'm not sure we need.
Which, of which part?
Oh, so the second red line.
I might even sure this, the paragraph that says current observations suggest that.
So which, which, sorry, I'm trying to figure.
I'm on page one oh one of our packet.
Okay.
You're on the first page of a large house study committee.
The general purpose.
And the second paragraph, the last line, the blue line.
I would, I would probably recommend we strike the whole of that new addition, but at minimum.
Well, that's not a new addition. It was moved. It was in the original and then at my suggestion, we moved it up here.
Fine. So.
But, you know, so.
Notwithstanding the pleas about it.
So current observations.
This is a background.
The one that says current observations suggests, right?
It's not correct.
That paragraph.
Yes.
Reforms adopted in twenty seventeen are not meeting the town's current planning goals. You don't think that that's true?
No, he just doesn't like the last sentence.
I know, I know, but no, no, no. But then he just said he wanted to strike his paragraph.
I'm, I mean, I think we have background in it from other places, which I think is sufficient, but I.
I understand what you mean.
I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put, subject the planning board to making comments of things that are overly permissive or not. You know, like that kind of a judgment call. If you guys want to, you guys can vote to do it, but I think.
But you know something, Adam? That goes to the whole reason why we're doing this. If we don't believe that's true, there's no reason to have this committee.
I, 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 I disagree. We're doing this because we've, we have heard from a number of residents in town that the size of the box on the lot is too big, period.
That's not what I'm hearing.
Well, we're doing this because town meeting told us to do it.
What I'm hearing is Joe Matthews saying the, the price, the price of the houses in town are too expensive. That's what I hear Joe Matthews saying. You can't get a house in Needham for under a million dollars. For under a million two. Oh, oh, you know, a young family moving into Needham cannot afford to move into Needham. Unfortunately, that's true in the entire Boston metropolitan area.
Well, so by moving from seven thousand to five thousand square feet, is that going to obtain, is that going to get the goal?
Well, we, yeah, but we, we, we're using an example, which I do not think is the correct, correct example to use here as far as, um, perhaps where the biggest impact will be. It's not the seven thousand to fifty-five hundred. Maybe it's the, maybe it's the four thousand to twenty-seven hundred or five, fifty-five, five thousand to thirty-five hundred. Because I mean, I've heard from multiple people that they are coming into Needham and they want the house have a certain size, but the builders aren't building it. That's what they want. And they can't find it.
And what Adam is saying is you're not going to get it. No, but no builder is going to come into Needham.
Right.
And tear down a house and put up a twenty-seven hundred square foot house. It's just not economically feasible anymore because he's going to spend.
A certain amount of money.
Yep.
No, today he's going to spend eight hundred thousand dollars minimer, but for the lot.
Right.
Okay. The tear down is not expensive. The building of the new house is expensive on a square foot basis. He's not going to be able to make his money back. So, you know, yeah, maybe the price of a lot is going to go down, which is what Adam is talking about, you know, what's going to be the impact. But, you know, you know, I, I, my block alone, okay? The house be, directly behind me on my block was torn down a couple of, like a year and a half ago. And the new house, the huge house went up. There were two brand new tear downs in the past month on my block.
You're also SRA though.
What?
You're also SRA.
That may be, but it's still, you know.
The perception is out there, large hopes comes in.
You know, and, and.
So I guess the question is, there's a paragraph here. Adam doesn't feel comfortable with the last sentence, right?
I, yeah.
Does anyone else feel uncomfortable with the last sentence?
I don't know that the rest of it is necessary, but I in particular would recommend striking the last paragraph.
Thing is, I mean, I think, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I, I do appreciate, I appreciate what you're saying. And understanding does not mean, I mean, agreeing. Because I think, I think as far as the sustainability, I mean, we're talking a smaller house is more, is inherently more sustainable than a larger house. These are less resources being used. There are less, it's less, um, electricable, heating and so forth. So inherently it's more sustainable than a larger house.
But I think the question is, do we feel that, that this is to the, you know, that, that we want to keep that sentence? Is this to the detriment of the town's goals on affordability, sustainability and its negative impacts on current and future residents? Is that something that we feel comfortable keeping in there or should we strike that one?
From what people tell me when they're trying to find smaller houses, even they're trying to find a thirty-five hundred square foot house, four thousand foot.
No, no, I, I, like, I, I get that's what people are saying. I, I agree with you already. Uh, but, but, but the, the charter of this, it really should be, we're only doing this because town meeting ordered us to do it. When it came to, I mean, you know, like. That, that, that's, that's a driver.
Well, that's a driver.
You know, we can certainly say now we can, we can package it up and say.
We've been talking about doing it for a while, so.
But that doesn't matter. We're doing this now because town meeting at the last meeting said, you need to, you need to do this and come back to us. Yes. And they've been talking about it. I, I agree. I'm not saying this hasn't been on the agenda. There's lots of stuff that's been on lots of town meetings or town.
Right.
Committees that just haven't been done yet. Um, tree bylaws, that's been on the agenda for fifteen years with the select board, but it's like, but it hasn't happened yet.
But no, we had it on an agenda for us to do it. But I guess the question is, it's saying this is like, it's stating this is to the detriment. I think it should say, you know, maybe we have heard from the town that it's not meeting the town goals on affordability or something like that, right?
Sure, sure.
I don't.
We, we have a housing plan or a housing.
But that housing study and that housing plan does not identify any objective affordability or sustainability or, uh, or other impacts, unless we're referring to those objectives.
That's the question, does it?
It does. It does. That's what it.
What is, what is, what is the, what is the affordable price point, which is what we're talking about?
No, no, no. I think one of the things that came out of the housing study is that, you know, that.
What's the goal?
That there's no affordability, that, that there's no sustainability and that there are negative impacts of, of, of these huge houses, of the tear downs and the huge houses.
But that line is specifically saying that the current bylaw.
Not the bylaw.
Well, it says specifically, the current bylaw regulations for new construction are overly permissive and do not appropriately regulate size. The next sentence is, is talking about that.
This is to the, okay.
There is, so we're, we're saying that the current bylaw for new construction, it's overly permissive and does not appropriately regulate the house of size. That's then, then the next sentence is saying this is to the detriment of.
The town's goals.
The town's goals of affordability.
Well, our goals are in the housing study.
How much is going to help?
Correct, correct, right.
That's a separate issue.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but I.
You could say per the housing study, per the housing master plan, um.
Unless the housing master plan talks at pinpoints, pinpoints. What, then you were, you were part of the chair.
Yes.
So can you tell me what the affordability price point is?
There's no price point. It says we, we, we have affordable housing.
Affordable housing would be in terms of a price for a single family home in SRB. We can't because it doesn't exist. I looked at it. So unless we're talking about something specific, I think it's foolhardy to say that the goal of this thing is ultimately to make more affordable housing and more sustainable housing. We're not. We're reducing the size of the home. To Artie's point, reducing the size of the home in theory could have an impact that it has, it has.
Why are we reducing the size of a home?
Because the appearance is that the structure is too big. That's how this started before Joe, before Joe.
The structure too big. Why do people think the structure is too big?
Relative to the lot size. They feel it's the.
Relative to the neighborhood.
So it's purely aesthetic.
I don't, I don't think it's purely aesthetic.
Trees are getting, trees, the whole lots are being wiped out with trees.
So there's the sustainability issue.
Sustainability from the aspect.
But that's a tree bylaw.
The storm water.
The size of the basements, the storm water, issues with that.
Storm water, we have a storm water.
Exactly.
But, but.
Fine, but it doesn't help. It doesn't help. The size of a house is definitely.
Better help because that's what it's for.
But it's not helping. The side, when the size of a basement is twice what it was there before, there's now a detriment, the storm water issues in that lot, in that neighborhood.
Is that what people are complaining about? When they say the houses are too big.
Absolutely, that happens. Absolutely, that happens.
Today, today, there are multiple complaints. We don't have goals that talk about what the displacement factor should be for a single family house in SRB.
So I have a recommendation. Instead of saying what the detriment of the town's goals, why don't we refer to the housing plan? Saying this is based on, um, because it was discussed a lot during the housing.
This is to the detriment of the town's goals as stated in the town's housing plan.
Yeah.
Sure.
That's sure.
Because the, the, the housing plan has one whole area on the large house.
And what were those goals?
Well, we'd have to pull it up right this second. I don't, I didn't memorize it, but I guess I feel comfortable with that. If others feel comfortable with saying to go to the housing plan. It was a problem for the housing plan. It was a huge, I don't know, Lee, can you bring it up? I mean, but I'll, I'll bring it up right now.
If it's not to the detriment of our goals, then there's no reason to do this. We have goals that are stated in the housing plan. And if we're not willing to say that the large houses, that the size of the houses today, whatever these issues are that we're going to talk about, whether it's FAR, whether it's, um, um, lot coverage, whether it's setbacks, whether it's height. If it's not detrimental to our goals, then we shouldn't be doing it. And we should report back to town meeting to say, we've studied our goals, we've studied our housing plan, and there's no reason to be, to be doing this, no matter what Joe Matthews thinks.
So let me just tell you what the housing plan does. The housing plan has zoning strategies to comply with MBTA communities, adopt townwide inclusionary zoning, broaden requirements for accessory dwelling units, promote greater energy efficiencies in housing. So that's the sustainability. Consider options for promoting development in appropriate locations by incentivizing new housing. Consider options to better control tear down activity. And then it, it has. And then it, it has here, housing development and preservation strategies, support the housing authority, continue local programs that address health and safety issues, strategically invest and leverage local resources, promote housing for special needs populations, renovate, um, replace Stephen Palmer, prepare inventory of potential public and privately owned development, consider waiving application fees, and then capacity building strategies, continue to provide community outreach, monitor targeted housing goals, identify impacts of housing proposals, and build a local and regional support and collaboration for housing.
I hear nothing.
I hear nothing about affordability.
One second.
Or sustainability goals.
It says, the housing plan working group is publishing this housing plan to provide a pathway for creating housing opportunities in Needham. After fifteen months of work, of working together, the working group has concluded that the town needs to pursue opportunities to provide housing that is affordable to residents of different income levels. We believe the implementation of this housing plan to preserve and hopefully increase both moderate income and affordable housing is critical into maintaining the diversity and economic prosperity of Needham.
Wasn't this driven predo- you know, predominantly on multifamily development?
No, no.
Huge housing plan, Adam. It, it's, it's, it's.
I know, I saw, I, I know, we have, we have it. I guess what I'm saying is, to go back to my original point, the purpose of this is to reduce the size of the home. It's not to really make these homes affordable.
Joe Matthews didn't want to reduce the size of a home.
I don't care about one individual resident.
No, Adam, that's, that, that's what was in front of town meeting. That's what he presented to town meeting, and that was his whole argument.
Before he went to town meeting, as chair, I brought the issue to this board, which agreed to put it as a priority for us to study independently.
Right, with our own, with our own mission, but the mission is now formed that by, from town meeting.
It's foolhardy. How can you tell me that a two point eight million dollar house is an affordable house and achieves the affordability goal of that?
We're not saying it is, Adam.
Well, that's why I don't wanna link it in.
It's more affordable than a three point five million dollar house.
That's true, Artie. That's true. That's, that's true. And it's, and it's true. Maybe.
But one of our goals is to have housing for all levels of.
That's still, that's not making workforce housing for someone that's making a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year in a household. Exactly. So we're talking about housing for the wealthy. So let's talk about it.
No, we're trying to talk about housing for the person who's making a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year.
You think we're gonna re- you think we're gonna reduce the size of a home to eighteen hundred square feet?
No, we're trying to decent, we're trying to incentivize people not tearing down houses as well.
That's part of it also.
That's part of it.
That's part of it also.
That's right.
I think, I, it is, I.
If we have a stock of resales in the twenty-two hundred to three thousand square foot range, then you're going to be able to sell houses to people who are making a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars a year.
I agree, but then you could do that now.
How? Developers are coming in and tearing them all down.
Well, what's gonna change later then?
I don't know. That's what this, that's what this committee is for.
That's what the group is gonna do, right?
The thing is, we, we don't, oh my gosh, we don't know ultimately what's gonna be coming out of this. We have a charge to look into it to, hold on, no, no, we don't know. We have a charge to look into it, to do research, to find out what the impact it is, what can we do and what is the impact when we do it? Or what, what, what we would like to do, what is the impact when we do it? We're looking at, you know, the size of the house. We're, I mean, and we're talking about, okay, we, we talk about the lot that's being affected, replaced, torn down. We also have to look at the neighborhood around it, because no matter what, the neighborhood around it is affected by a house that goes in there, a tear down that goes on, the possible flooding that occurs because of that. We don't, I, I don't know what the, I don't know what the outcome's gonna be, but I do know, I do know, I do, I do know, I do know, we have to find out. We have to look into it and try to do something. Is there something we can do? If there is, let's do it. Because it wasn't done in two thousand seventeen.
But that's what the group is gonna do. What is the charge of the group? The charge of the group is to, to, D, so what is it?
It's, it's what, it's what we had in there.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying.
So current observations suggest that the reforms adopted in two thousand seventeen are not meeting the town's current planning goals and should be further revised to limit and or disincentivize tear downs and or incentivize additional buildout activity via further changes in the zoning bylaw.
That'd be great.
Okay, are you, do you see a problem with that sentence, Adam?
With the sentence before that?
The first sentence in the paragraph. Current observations suggest that the reforms adopted in two thousand seventeen and its current observations suggest that what we did in two thousand seventeen are not meeting our current goals and should be revised to limit or disincentivize tear down and or incentivize additional buildout activity via further changes in the zoning bylaw. That's all we can do anyways, change the zoning bylaw.
I think if we're gonna refer to the, to goals, we should, first of all, I see, there are two points here. One is this board needs to give clarity to this, to the housing committee, to, or, uh, um, so it's clear on what their goals are. That's number one. And number two, and it doesn't sound like we're necessarily clear as a board on what that is. And that goes to this point. I don't, you know, if you wanna talk about, anytime you refer to goals, you refer to those very specific goals. Talking about, well, we want more, we want greener housing is not really a goal. You set out quantifiable goals. We don't have those. We just heard from the housing plan what those, what, you know, what goals were.
We don't need a committee.
I, I just think.
If we have to tell them what the quantitative goals are, we don't need a committee to tell us what, what the content, what the quantitative goals are. We're planning board doing it.
We don't need a committee to do it, yeah.
Then, then that's a reason enough to delete the sentence. I think we wanna be very.
No, I don't, no, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that.
You guys, if you guys wanna give ambiguous direction to a committee.
I don't think it's ambiguous. I just don't agree with it.
I think tying this in to affordability and sustainability as goals is a mistake. I do disagree with that.
Right, and you, and you can have your opinion, but we have our opinion too.
That's absolutely true. So the board can, you know, vote accordingly. That's right.
Specifically, okay, so we've already, I've already read the first sentence two or three times. Specifically, the current bylaw regulations for new construction are, I would take out are overly permissive. I'm not.
Right.
As a judge's judgment that we can't really.
Right, exactly right. That was my point.
I would say, do not appropriate, do not appropriately regulate house size.
Okay.
Or, yeah, or may not, but okay.
Well, if, if they appropriate regulate house size, we shouldn't be, we don't need this committee.
Committee, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, certainly residents with parcels do not appropriate, properly regulate, yeah. I mean, we don't need the overly permissive part because do not appropriately regulate, states it right there.
And then let's get even more ambiguous and to say, this is, this is to the detriment of the town's goals as set forth in the.
Housing.
Yes, in the housing plan.
In the housing plan, previously adopted by the planning board.
The town of Needham housing plan, December of twenty twenty-two.
And then the, then the large house committee can go through the housing plan and determine, right?
Paul, you don't wanna be such as affordability.
No, no, no.
No.
Let them read the plan.
Right.
This is to the detriment of the town's goals as set forth in the housing plan.
I feel comfortable with those changes, Adam. Do you feel comfortable with those changes?
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Justin, do you feel comfortable with those changes? Artie?
Yes.
Okay.
That's fine.
So now, that's the first part. The second part is the composition. So let's finalize the composition.
Like, yes, I know, we, we've said ZBA and R B should be there. I mean, we can ask and opine FinCom once we come up with a fiscal impact analysis for, you know, the second point that you're talking about and how that would affect tax structure in the, in, in the town. We can certainly ask. I mean, FinCom really shouldn't even be opining on, you know, Joe Schmo's ability to sell his house or what the, what the valuation of his house would be, because that's not their charge. But how that would affect the town is certainly something that we would want to have them opine. So we can remove them and, you know, once we have a draft, we can certainly ask for their input.
So now we're down to.
What about the citizen at large for the, for.
May I get back to the finance committee?
Yes.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not done with the finance. To me, the issue of whether or not to have a member of the finance committee is a political question. We did that.
Oh, yeah.
We did that for Muzzy. I, I think it was for Muzzy.
Well, we did it for home.
We did it for home, and also that was a.
And we did it for home. Because we felt that, that having a member of the finance committee, we wanted a member of the finance committee to go back to John F. Kennedy naming Lyndon Johnson as his vice president, have somebody in the tent pissing out rather than standing outside the tent pissing in.
Well, we also had it in the housing plan. Carol for sure had it as that.
And we had to have twelve members on the housing.
So, the question is, in my mind, do we feel that we need to have somebody on the finance committee being part of this so that when this is all said and done, the finance committee doesn't come back to us and say, we're blindsided because we didn't have an opportunity to know what was going on as it was going on? We, we weren't in the room.
So I have, I, I agree with you. I think the finance committee was, was pretty key in both of those committees that I was on. But do we need two citizens at large, or can we have one?
In the Muzzy one.
Can we just get rid of the two, two citizens, the two at large, and we just have one?
But that's, that arguably is a political thing, because every committee has.
Well, we can have one.
Sure.
One citizen at large. Because we had one. So if we get rid of the historic commission and go to them for, and then what, get rid of one citizen, then we're at eleven. And we had fourteen at the other one and nine at the other one. And they both worked while I was on both of them.
Now, we probably wanna keep this, but I'll ask it anyway, because, I mean, we have an architect, but we also have the design review board. I wanna make sure we keep the architect. And do we need to keep, and we probably need to keep the design review board.
But the design review board is the only one that reviews it.
Yeah. Reviews what? Oh.
They reviews, right, the, some of these houses?
They don't review the house, but some, some towns do have design review boards doing reviews. Wellesley does, for example.
Yeah, they're, it's only commercial, right? They're only.
No, residential over certain sites triggers a design review board approval in Wellesley.
No, no, but Needham.
But not here.
But we know Needham does not.
Not here.
Right, correct, yeah.
So.
It did serve an important function, both the architect and the design review board, if it is someone who's an architect like a Mark Leasing, for instance, who has continuity, who has institutional knowledge.
Right, I think that's a report, please.
I, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that. Uh, separate from what a private, separate from another architect who's not part of the institution of government.
And can give, I can give a different perspective.
That's exactly.
So I would recommend removing two, the historic commission and one of the citizens at large. Is that, that's better than nothing. I think some of the other ones are valuable and that's political. Okay, so does everyone feel comfortable with that?
Right.
Yep.
Okay, so Lee and Alex, are you, no?
Yes, I think we can.
Well.
You really want the historic commission?
What?
You want the.
No, no, I don't want the historic commission.
Yeah.
I'll be totally blunt about my thinking.
I know you voted that, I just wanted to bring it back.
Paul's gonna be, Paul's gonna be.
Paul's thinking.
Paul's gonna be blunt about his thinking right now.
I'm gonna be blunt about my thinking. On the same line about what I gave about the finance committee, I would like to see Joe Matthews on this committee as one of the citizens at large. I'm not sure I want him to be the only citizen at large. I would feel better if there were another citizen at large with Joe Matthews.
There was balance of. Yeah, there was the woman, um, I'm trying to blank her name now. We, she, we, we, we voted for her to be on the housing thing, uh.
And, and actually, we want all of these, we, we also want all of these desig- assigned by the planning board.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. We need to state that, that the planning board.
We also wanna make sure that we're not just appointing, you know, to your point, advocates and all of that. So having another housing advocate and, and Joe Matthews is not good. You want a balance of opinion, someone who is perhaps a little more open on the issue.
What, what was the next line? Is expected that other citizens will, will be asked, invited to assist with various assignments related. You certainly ask Joe Matthews to come in and, and, and opine, and I think that's important.
I wanted to work with him. He sent me an email recently, and it was, uh, harshly critical, calling my, Artie, this effort bogus, basically.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if Joe's gonna want it anyways.
Well, part of my problem is that nothing's gonna satisfy him.
Well, okay.
So let's, let's.
Okay, but can we just finish putting together this?
Let's get off Joe, okay?
Because we haven't.
Let's get off Joe. It's not necessary, it's not useful, it's not useful at all.
You can always add, we can always re-vote on it to, to add a citizen at large, should we, let's just get this.
But I do, I actually recognize the point that Paul's making. You want a diversity of opinion on the thing. That's true. And if we do, whether it's an individ- like, if it is Joe or someone else, you still wanna have a diversity of opinion. So maybe having two citizens at large then does make sense.
So why don't we just keep it as is, except remove the historic commission?
Fine.
Okay.
Keep it what?
Keep, keep the, the main membership as it is. Just remove the historic. Okay, and then, but we do wanna add something to say that these are being appointed by the planning board.
Right. Real estate developer, developer, the architect, and the, and the citizens of at large shall be appointed by the.
Well, I think it says it on the, on the, the pre, previous paragraph where it says, membership in making appointments at large houses, the planning board intends to identify qualified candidates.
Yeah, but we're not.
Well, identified, but we have to approve. We're the ones that approve.
No, but we're not doing it because we're not gonna choose the select board members. We're not gonna choose the finance committee member. We're not gonna choose the ZBA member. Those boards are gonna choose.
Yep, exactly.
So we would like to choose the real estate.
So the real estate developer to be chosen by the planning board. One developer by, one real estate board would be chosen by the planning board. One, one, one developer would be chosen by the planning board.
One two citizens.
We can also remove these little builders from the membership.
Yeah, I have that, the one of the.
Two citizens at large to be chosen by the board.
Yeah, I have appointed by the planning board.
Appointed by the planning.
Okay.
And then at, you have there, the large house review committee shall consist of twelve, and then you have fourteen members. So whatever that is, has to be consistent.
We're back at twelve.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're twelve now, too.
But the number should change also. It says fourteen. Okay, so are we all set with this for, for the charge and the membership?
We just hoping for a non-member, but I don't think we might just have to, I think we're just gonna live with it.
I, I have a feeling, I feel the even number may not, may not come back and bite us. And I don't think, it's such a large number, I'm not sure.
For home, we had just one or two people that disagreed at any point.
Yeah, I think, I think how we work, I don't think.
Yeah.
You're never gonna get, you're never gonna get all twelve people in the same.
And they're not all gonna be there at the same time. You can just close the door.
And just as a typo, where it says two members or designate the planning board that should be designees.
Yeah, we got that.
Yeah, and same for select board.
And may I just say, this is not to talk about now, but if anybody has any really clever names that aren't a mouthful, like Large House Review Study Committee, which we already used before, um, just, it would be nice to have a, a new name for one thing to differentiate it and
I'll give it some thought.
Give it some thought. Come back to me if you have something. Otherwise, it might just be Large House Review Study Committee, twenty twenty-four.
When the resources and budget, when would you anticipate, Lee, what would you anticipate the fiscal impact analysis, looking at three things? The acquisition cost, the sale cost, and the impact on the town. Isn't that gonna be somewhere around the neighborhood of like thirty thousand dollars?
I don't know.
Well then, should we make a comment about that under resources or budget? Because right now it's saying these costs can be absorbed by the, your department. And I don't wanna give FinCom an opportunity to say, we were gonna cover this ourselves, and we, you know, we're not, we didn't need to go to FinCom.
Well, why don't we just say consultant service will be provided on an as needed basis?
I'd be fine with that.
But is that covered under your?
Right, is it under your budget or is it under?
You're gonna need to go to, you know, Mother Man.
Because under budget, it just says normal costs such as printing and.
Exactly. Exactly my point.
Right, I mean, I think we should, it's covered, I have it, I have it, I have it through the appropriation that we have. We have eighty thousand dollars. So if we have to spend money for a consultant, we can spend it out of my budget, to the, to the extent that's available and out of the eighty thousand dollar appropriation we have.
So should we add in here, uh, um, under resources, uh, consultants will be engaged on an as needed basis, uh, budget, um, consulting, uh, something like consulting expenses, uh, will be, to the extent possible, consult expenses will be paid under the departmental budget, or may otherwise require additional source of funds?
Yes. What was the last phrase you said?
Additional sources of funds?
Okay.
Under, under budget will be, I, cons- consulting fees will be paid where possible, under the department budget. Or.
Or town meeting appropriation.
Or such other appropriation as needed.
And I, I'd like to just bring it up only because people are asking me, and I know the reason why, though. It's just. It says, "Charge and introduction of the committee in October 24." I understand, I understand why there may be reasons to be doing that. But is there, is it, is it possible to do before then? Or is it, is this too much work going on?
Before then? Before then, it's almost then. It's almost then now. It's August.
Oh, that's right. Now we're talking, that's right. It's a, it's a month later than we first did this.
It's August, and I can tell you, all we're doing is MBTA community work.
Forget, forget I said anything. We first looked at this over a month ago.
Just around town meeting in October. I thought even starting in October would be a miracle. Okay, so with that, any other changes or are we ready to take a vote?
You can vote again if you'd like. I'll make a motion to vote again.
Okay.
The charter as amended.
Second.
Okay, so Justin and then Artie seconded. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that was approved to move forward with the changes that we discussed. Perfect. Okay, and then we have two meeting minutes to review. We have the, we have the June 18th meeting minutes. Any questions or comments on those meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve if there's no questions or comments.
For a second?
Paul, you're supposed to be taking it up.
I haven't really, to be honest with you, I haven't really reviewed these plans. I haven't had an opportunity to.
Should we, should we put them off next one? As if there's nothing when we haven't. I don't push them.
I looked up them and I didn't see anything.
I didn't see any issues.
Natasha's seconding the motion.
Can I second? I don't know what I'm suppo, I, I know I can't make a motion, but I can second.
I'll second the motion.
Paul seconds it. Okay, so.
There's something about you in there.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so those are approved, and then July 11th. Any questions on the July 11th? They're actually very, they've been really.
They've been really good and pretty.
Really, yeah, pretty good. Okay, so.
I make a motion to approve the July 11th planning board minutes.
And Paul seconds it, and so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so those are both approved. And then the last item, the two items, is a report from planning board. I just want to say what the correspondence we have, and then, we have a correspondence. Oh, gosh, I had it here. I don't know. Let's see it here. Correspondence from August 13th from the abutment of the Carter Building, Susan Herman, about the density of 100 West Street.
It was Michael and Susan Herman. That's not, that's not.
Michael and Susan. Okay.
I think the title to his.
Michael and Susan Herman. I stand corrected. A couple of other things that have happened, and then, and then Lee and Alex. The open meeting law complaint was filed for the select board to only advertise for, for the joint meeting, and it, it was found that it didn't violate the law. There was a press release that Lee wanted us to look at on legislation passed for towns to review zoning to allow for ADUs by right. We have to review our zoning in the spring to make adjustments for that.
Yes.
They haven't come out with a regulation.
Oh, no, just passed.
Just, it's legislation, exactly, so we.
It just passed last, last week, right.
Yeah, the law doesn't even go into effect for 180 days after it was signed last week, so that's, so, so that's February.
Yeah, they said February 2nd.
February, so, February 2nd. So who knows when the regulations will, will issue? We may have, if, if we're gonna wait for the regulations, it's possible that we're not looking at the May meeting, but we're looking at the October meeting.
Right.
I took a quick look at it, you know, after looking at that. I'm, I'm not sure that there's a lot that we need to change.
Well, I think, I think the units will be allowed in accessory structures.
Yeah.
Detached.
Well.
Detached structures, so.
You know, I'll tell you something. I, in fact, I called, I, I called Chris Heap about that because I read that in the press release, but I didn't see it in the statute. And I called Chris and said, what do you think? Are they saying that we have to allow detached structures? And he sees it as a gray area. I'm not sure, I'm not sure that we do. And I think we have to wait for the regulations to come out to know.
I'm reading on the mass planner's lister of that. That's the interpretation, but we'll see what happens.
I didn't, you know, if they can point to where it is in the statute, you know, I looked at it, I couldn't find it. But we're already at 900 square feet. We already allow rentals. What we do have that the statute doesn't allow is that we require that the property be owner occupied.
Right.
And that's, and that's not allowed.
And we have a funky, we have a funky family definition.
I'm not sure that the new statute, well, we have to address the, the Attorney General's
Exactly.
reference, but that's, that's not in the statute.
But the good news is that we, we got that approved, and so now it's modifying what we have. So it's not totally from scratch, right?
Right, right.
Which is huge. So, well, okay, so any other?
Uh, just to let you know, GPI just completed a traffic study for us based upon the likely buildout under, under Home. And so I've invited them into the next planning board meeting to do a presentation so you have that information in advance of the public hearing. And then, of course, we're gonna be doing the public hearing on Home. We scheduled that for September the 5th. They were, and we're gonna be at Broadmenow.
Yep.
That's on our next meeting.
Not your, no, your next meeting is August 27th. And that was an extra meeting we added. We had to add it this month just because of the schedule.
Because we got two applications.
Because we got two applications. And then the hearing is on a Thursday, which is unusual, but that was just to meet the timelines for the advertising for the, for the zoning.
Okay. Anything else from anyone?
Um, just, so the, so the hearing is gonna be at Broadmenow?
Broadmenow on the 5th.
On the 5th, and our meeting on the 27th is here?
August 27th, yep.
Is here. Yep, Charles River.
I move to adjourn. Second.
So, oh, well, I'm so tired.
They're always debating.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.